This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we're gonna call the hearing of 2020. The 2021 fiscal year budget to order. If you have any issues during this meeting, what I'd like you to do is, you know, be diligent, try to get back on, and we have a facilitator, Mike Damato, who will help you if you're having any sort of issues trying to stay on, et cetera. Most likely, it's from your end. It's pretty stable platform, but that doesn't mean something. So anyway, if you need to, you can contact him directly. And let me give you all a telephone number to write down. So if you're having an issue, you can contact Mike directly, and he'll try to help you. The other thing that you want to do is also keep track of the phone number that you utilized to get to this meeting. So just in case for some reason you get bumped, you can try to get right back on. All right, so we're all trying to navigate this new way of public meeting. Nobody is a huge fan of it, I have to say. I'd much rather see all of you live. But here we are. The other thing I want to mention to the board members, if for some reason something or other happens with this meeting, in other words, there's some sort of technical glitch, or we go over the allotted people that we can have, which is, I believe at this meeting is 250. We would then have to reschedule this public hearing if that takes place. So I just want you to be prepared that if this thing is not completed successfully with anybody trying to get here, able to get here, we will have to reschedule this public hearing for another date. And I would assume that that date would be next Thursday, if it happens. So the other thing. Every time you speak, because we have a whole bunch of people on the telephone, every time you speak, you have to identify yourself. There's only, you know, maybe a half a dozen, you know, a dozen or two people that are actually on video. So we've got at least 140 people now, and they're on telephone or off video. So you need to identify yourself every time you speak. Yes.
Chuck?
Yes, who's this?
Chuck, this is Esther. I just want to give you my phone number because I don't have a computer.
Okay.
So I will be on mute. But I know sometimes who is ever running the meeting, like puts you on mute, and since I don't have a computer, I can't unmute myself, so I will hit myself with my phone button.
Okay.
Okay, so it's 840-1958, and I will be on mute. Okay?
Okay, very good. Glad you're here.
Thank you, sir.
Board of Finance is made up. Myself, Charles Carl, Judy Austin, Garth Bean, Jesse Burnham, Angie DeSanto, and Carl Fallsgraph. We also have three alternates, Esther Jagosinski, John Copack, and Butch Simpson. I believe we have all of them present. We also have a Board of Selectmen here. I know that Ralph Fletcher, and I don't know if the other two, Catherine Silversmith or Bill Fleddy are here.
Catherine Silversmith is here.
Catherine's here, and I'm not sure about Bill. The very first thing I want to do is, I want to thank all of you for being here. This is a really tough budget cycle, and this is a tough format for all of us to try to interact. So I applaud you all for trying to make the best of this situation. I'd like to specifically thank our town employees and boards. And the boards I'm speaking of in this case are the Board of Finance, the Board of Education, and the Board of Selectmen. All three of those boards have been working very, very hard to try to put together something for the public to understand and, you know, get your feedback and see where we go from here. I also want to especially thank Cheryl Baker, Christine Abikoff, Sherry Much, and Ralph Fletcher. Those people have really spent an awful lot of time trying to help me and our board get from A to B. And I'm hoping all of you as, you know, fellow citizens recognize the effort that these people try to put forward, and they do just a boatload of work. I'm very, very pleased with their efforts on our behalf. What I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna briefly touch base on the various budgets that we're contemplating. Just, I am gonna make the assumption that all of you have the document for the public hearing, which has the various budgets in them. It's got, you know, five-year capital plan. It's got the Region 19, the Ashford School, and, you know, mill rate calculations, et cetera, et cetera. So I am going to assume that all of you can read those details. However, there's some highlights that I think we need to touch base on. I am not to read out loud the letter that I wrote to you, but I think that I should be able to, that I think is important. "It is with the utmost concern that the Board of Finance has considered this year's budget with an environment of uncertainty that COVID-19 has waged on our citizens. This pandemic has been unfolding alongside our usual budget schedule. And as you will see reading on, our various budgets have been reduced to an uncomfortable degree in the hopes of staying ahead of state and national deteriorating financial climates." As this, as these budgets have been being developed, we have gotten increasingly insecure financial developments from both the federal and the state government. And so it is with that backdrop that an evolution of these budgets have taken place in very, very fast, almost real time. So something that was decided one week, there was more information to consider as the weeks progressed. So, one thing I do want to point out on the page where we have budget highlights, underneath total spending plan, I made an error in that particular number. The number is correct below it. So the total spending plan for 2020, 2021 is $15,501,257, you know, million dollars. It was miswritten as $15,589 and 20 and 258. The reason for that was our capital improvement budget, again, changed in real time. So the chart below is accurate, but we forgot to modify the total spending plan when that capital improvement budget was modified. So the general fund operating budget Of that, the general government is $3,406,582. The Ashford Board of Education is $7,678,893. And Region 19, their Board of Education's budget is, and Ashford share is $3,901,532. The capital improvement budget is $514,250, thereby rendering the total spending plan In that document gives the history of how these budgets came about. I don't think it's worthwhile in this meeting to go through the history of it. I think we should just dive into what we're dealing with today. And so for the general government budget, we set, and I want to make this clear because I got a number of your letters, and actually, I'll speak to that right now. I received everyone's letters. I got a total of just shy of 60 letters. And every single letter was forwarded to all of my digital board members. And all of the others were printed and hand-delivered to the two members that don't have digital access, with the exceptions of the ones that I got this morning, late morning and afternoon. So for those people, I apologize because there are two members that did not get your particular letters in real time. I have copies for them, and they will get them at a later date. But the lion's share of everything you've written has been shared. I also have a list of people that have asked to speak tonight, and I have them in the order that they were requested. And so I will start with those. And then at the end of the, after this presentation, you know, those of you that are on the phone and so forth that want to speak, you could either, you know, just let us know, and we'll get you in as quickly as we can. With the general government budget, we decided ultimately on April 16 to drop their budget to zero, with the exception of $71,000 approximately for the firehouse. And again, several of you wrote in your letters that you were disappointed that the town budget was going up and the school budget in this proposal was not. I want to, again, I want to make this very clear. The town's budget has not gone up except for the firehouse. The reason for that is that Eastford decided after 50 years to not work with us and utilize our firehouse. So we lost that particular revenue source, and the firehouse had to react to keep services as we have become accustomed to them. So if the firehouse does not get these dollars, we will have to get rid of EMTs, and it will affect the time that they are able to respond to any typical, you know, any type of emergency. So it was decided by the board members that that was something that was too far to go. We have to protect the public, and it was decided that that was gonna be left in the budget. One of the distinctions I'd like to make is that in the general government budget, when we allocate monies to a particular department, it stays with that department. So when we say that it's $71,000 for the firehouse, it stays with the firehouse. Unless we have to, you know, the only way that we can do that, departments cannot share resources. The selectmen come to the Board of Finance if one department is having issues financially and needs some support, and we can sometimes transfer funds from one department to another. But that is an action that has to be made by the Board of Finance through a request from the Board of Selectmen. So it's a distinction that I'd like everybody to try to really understand that as the budget stands now, the general government budget got no increase in this proposal except for the firehouse. The Ashford Board of Education, as you all know, which is why most of you are here, initially requested a $337,000 approximately increase. The Board of Finance in March asked them to reduce it by 220, which they did, yet they came back requesting that they would like $181,000 reduction. That was what was agreed to at that time, given the information we had at that time. By April 16, enough things had changed that the Board of Finance decided that at that point it was untenable to increase their budget, given the financial state that many of us find in this town, state, et cetera. So that was the rationale of the direction that we went with the Board of Education. I've been to many of their meetings, and I have heard in earnest their deliberations over what they would do with that budget. And obviously, many of you have written in support of their efforts, and that is not lost on us. The Region 19 budget has already been passed by an executive order by the governor. Gave that regional district the power to pass a budget without sending it to referendum, and they've done that. Again, I want to make something very, very clear to all of you with the Region 19 Board of Education's budget. Their budget from last year to the proposed budget, which is now the budget for the 2021 year, their budget was reduced. They dropped their budget from last year to the upcoming year, the current year to the upcoming year. However, Ashford citizens have a larger share of that pie to deal with. We have more students going this year in relation to the others. So our population went up 11.4% in relation to Mansfield, which went up 4.1% in relation to Wellington, which went up 0.5%. So our share of that budget has increased, and that's affected us by So if we did nothing, we are still on the hook to pay that as far as a mill increase. So that's about what I'll say about Region 19 at this point. The capital improvement budget, again, was tackled with an eye towards being very careful with dollars this year. The proposed capital budget has $255,000 for road resurfacing, $15,000 for revaluation, a fire truck for 74, one school bus for 88. We have to, we have a historical project that it needs some design work, and the Ashford Historical Society is actually helping to fund that as part of the revenue side of that. We have a playscape, which was voted on two years ago. This is the second increment of that. There's a generator for Knowlton Hall, and also there's software for the assessor. So the, one of the things that I want to make clear about the capital budget is that it does not affect
This is frustrating.
It does not affect our mill rate. We take those funds out of capital non-reoccurring, which are funds that we put in from our undesignated fund after an audit to see where we are standing with the health of our community. That particular fund has been dwindling over the years. We keep sort of nibbling at the edges financially, and it's a, it's a fund that I believe the selectmen and certainly the Board of Finance have been very concerned about trying to maintain a healthy balance there. And we have been eroding that over the last several years. So that's a point that we are concerned about. So I think I've basically said what I would like to say about this particular budget. I guess I would like to see if the Board of Education would like to speak briefly about their budget, and I would request that it's brief. We have a lot of people that may want to speak, and I'd like to get everybody's voice heard. John? So this will be John Lippert, the Chair of the Board of Education.
Hi, everyone. Chuck made mention of Board of Ed meetings that he attended, and we appreciated his input. Most recently, we were tasked with reducing the budget by $159,000 approximately, $156,000. Ultimately, we did so. And ultimately, it's at the cost of at least two people's jobs above the of the reductions that we had made previously to get to where the budget was already. Those reductions are in the form of one teacher and one custodian. The other cuts, some are, will seem inconsequential on paper, and comparatively, they are. But, you know, if, if, you know, if supplies are needed and they're not budgeted for, well, that's just gonna be too bad. The other item of substance that was cut was sports. All of them, all coaches. If we are to have any sports at all next year at the school, it will be on a pay-to-play basis. So that's where the budget stands right now with a 0% or $0 increase for next year. We'll be arguing that we shouldn't make that reduction and that we should return to the pre-pandemic budget.
Thank you, John. I think what I'd like to do now is hear comments from the public, and I'm gonna start with the people that requested to be heard. And I had several of them, two of them, I'm unsure if they actually requested, but it seemed like a request. So I'll say your name when it's your turn. And if you want to speak, you can go. And if I misheard you, then, you know, you can pass. The first person that requested to speak, which was in April, was Erica Duplessis Rhodes, and I was wondering if she had her comments together.
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I will try to be respectful with everyone's time and be as brief as I can be.
Can I interrupt one second? Erica, thank you. I just want to remind everybody, we have a lot of people here, and we have about roughly 45 minutes. So if 45 people spoke out of 162, and y'all had a minute, we'd be at the end of the meeting. So if you can, please keep your voices concise, your thoughts concise, and be respectful.
Burger's good, it is overdone, but it's good.
So, thank you. Okay, Erica, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay. So I just wanted to say that I feel, as do many parents, that cutting the school budget is neither wise nor appropriate. The amount you're asking to be cut is a ridiculous sum. That means just absolutely detrimental changes to Ashford School. This cut means losing teachers, PARAS, Special Ed 101, substitutes, maintenance staff, necessary supplies, technology, which is so crucial in today's environment, as well as enrichment opportunities like field trips and extracurriculars like sports. And this is on top of cutting the vice principal salary and the school administrators foregoing their raises yet again. And it's not fair for the people who are asking teachers to take a pay freeze again. They do not make enough as it is. And since the Board of Finance, if I'm reading these numbers correctly, you're not maybe increasing the budget, but you have still seen fit to approve salary increases for 19 town officials. And that's not even including the public workers increases. And there's, weren't that substantial, so I think they certainly deserve them. But the 19 town officials that are getting a raise next year are not getting the standard 1.5 cost of living increase. They're getting significant increases in the range of 2% to 28% rate increases. I don't see how it would be fair to ask the teachers to forego their raises, or the school administrators, for that matter, who actually volunteered their raises in an effort to help save the kids from some of these horrific cuts that you're asking us to make. COVID-19 is not a good reason to implement these cuts. I understand your position, and I can understand the economic implications that have led to this decision, but I still think it's the wrong decision. I mean, aside from it just being immoral to cut the already voted-on and approved school budget while making increases to the town's budget elsewhere, it just seems insanely poor decision. I know you're saying that it's not increasing, but keeping it where it is is still an increase. And these kids are going to need substantial increases to support enrichment and education after the trauma of COVID-19. I mean, nobody knows exactly what impact this is going to have on today's youth, but I think we can all agree that they are going to need every single one of those amazing teachers and staff members to be there for them when school is finally able to resume again. I don't think that a half to 1 mil increase is unreasonable right now, as long as the taxes are used well. The state and federal governments are working hard to provide some stimulus packages and care programs to help anyone affected financially. And yes, I know we are all super scared about this right now, and rightfully so. I mean, I myself am currently unemployed thanks to COVID-19. And even still, I would happily see a slight increase to my taxes in order to save the school from these cuts. The school is the only reason we even live here. And I know this is true for many families in Ashford. I mean, ask a real estate agent what the big draw is to move to Ashford, and they will tell you, it's the school. I mean, I will be brief, I won't say more. But Board of Finance members, I just, I beseech you to reconsider and to restore the school's budget. I just don't think it's wise. Thank you for your time.
Erica, thank you. One of the things, before we move on to the next person, I did want to talk about the very last page of the public hearing document, is the mill rate calculation. So as it's been presented, you can see, this is the very last page, with all of the expenditure with all of the expenditures, general government, Ashford School, Region 19, non-property tax revenue, state revenue, expenditures, less non-property tax revenues, the fire department abatements, it's in relation to the net taxable grand list. We end up with a, a mil being valued at 299 million, 299 million 482,284 dollars. So every mil represents 299,000 dollars. And when you get to the bottom of the page, right now, we're at, given no increases to the budgets. Again, how this budget's been presented in this public hearing, we're looking at a nine, a .974 mil rate increase over last year. So we're basically essentially at one mil increase with no increase to Ashford School and essentially no increase to the town side of the budget. So every, every $30,000 that we add to this budget is a tenth of a mil. So it's just something to keep in mind. The second person that requested to speak, Paul Varga.
Thank you, Chuck. Paul Varga, hi Valerie. I'm, I'm just gonna quickly reiterate what I wrote to the Board of Finance. I support the budget the way it is. It, it, any larger increase is gonna hurt those who have no job or no income. We don't know what's gonna happen. We don't know how long this is gonna go on. And if there's a larger increase and people can't afford to pay it this year, it's just gonna make it worse in the future. So I think it's time to bite the bullet and sit on this for a little while and make it work so that everybody in town, and quite frankly, the state and probably the world, can get through this in one, one relative piece, so to speak. So thank you. And thank you to the Board of Finance members.
Thank you, Paul. The next person that requested to speak was Jennifer Lindsay.
Hi, I'm here. I had a long letter, but I won't read it aloud today. But this is Jennifer Lindsay and I'm representing the Ashford Education Association this evening. And we earnestly implore that you do not cut the budget for the Ashford School to 0%. Ashford School closed its doors in pert, to in-person classes on, in March. But for the past six weeks, although there were not children in the halls, school was continued. Teachers are teaching, children are learning, the cafeteria is feeding families, custodians are cleaning and making repairs to the building. The administration is developing plans and protocols for bringing our school family together again. The heart of Ashford School continues to beat on as we prepare for the kids to come back. And so cutting the budget to 0% will only hurt our kids. The members of the Ashford Education Association ask that you help us help children by helping us make Ashford School the safest and most productive and most dependable place that it can be for the kids. Help us show them that, that you believe in the importance and the value of their education by not cutting the budget to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Megan Smith?
Yes, hi, this is Megan Smith. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thanks. So I'm a resident in Ashford. I have two daughters, one of them which is in the, in kindergarten at the school. I already sent an email regarding my thoughts on the 0% increase for the Board of Ed last week. So I'm not going to reiterate all of that. I actually have questions regarding specific line items in your budget. And I'm newer to town, so forgive me if I, if this is public knowledge that I just don't know. As far as your town employees, are their salaries contractual?
Yes. Ralph, that's true, correct?
Yes, it is. We have, we, we do have a union here also.
Okay, so are, so are all town employees considered part of the union? And are the raises part of, part of their union contracts?
Yes, they are. Public Works in the Town Hall employees are all part of that, yes, and, and the transfer station.
Okay, alright, thank you. And then my other question is regarding planning and zoning. It, it appears that you eliminated the part-time salary, but you added an additional 46,000 to professional technical services. Can you, can you just disclose what that is?
Yes, what happened is last year, we actually had an employee that, that did numerous jobs and they have been replaced by other individuals. It's, it's pretty hard to explain. We had a building, we had a building inspector who was also the zoning enforcement officer and, and he did numerous other jobs. He left. And we now have a building inspector and we, we hired the zoning enforcement officer who is also from another town. And we, the building department is also part of another town. Our wetlands official is also a dozen number of towns and we pay him separately.
Okay, alright, that makes sense now. Okay. So the point that I just want to address goes back to what Erica had to say. I, I just, if, if we're that concerned about COVID-19 and the impact that it's going to have on our taxpayers and realistically possibly having to cut into the emergency fund, I don't see why anybody in town should be getting any raises whatsoever. It just seems like that money could be put to better use. If you're asking our teachers to have their pay increases frozen, why not ask the town employees to have theirs as well?
I, I'm not aware of the, I, I believe the teachers did get an increase, didn't they?
Yeah. I think there was some discussion at the meeting last week of people of possibly asking them to put raises on hold. But anyways, that's, my, my whole point is there's, there's over $33,000 in increased town employee salaries. And if we're that worried about the impact that COVID-19 is gonna have on our town and having to possibly cut into the emergency fund, that maybe we should consider asking town employees for pay, to accept pay freezes as well. So that's what I, that's, that's all I had to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. The next one I had, and, and I have a question mark because I wasn't sure if this was actually a request, but Rob Trotta?
Yes, good evening. My name is Rob Trotta. My family and I reside at 22 Lakeside Drive here in Ashford, Connecticut. We have a child in fourth grade and a child in sixth grade. I'd like to start that I appreciate the time and the effort that the Board of Finance and the Board of Education volunteer to manage our town, including our school, excuse me. My family and I have had the pleasure to travel and live throughout the US and internationally and find ourselves back in Ashford, Connecticut by choice. Speaking from experience, our town and especially our school is top-notch. We see the current budget as putting our town, specifically our children, at unacceptable level of risk. I spoke at the Board of Education meeting on the 29th when the board was trying to come up with a plan to cover the second round of cuts. At that time, we informed the board of our concerns and the negative impact the cutting of sports would have on our children. Some of those documented benefits of these programs are boosting economic, academic performance, improving life and social skills, creating safer, happier children, as well as promoting healthy hobbies versus unhealthy ones. Unfortunately, the Board of Education could not find another way to be in compliance with the budget cuts and canceled, canceled school-sponsored sports. We offer that the building of these soft skills is as important to a child's success in our society as reading, writing, and arithmetic. The Board of Education has stated that sports should be canceled, but we've done as pay-for-play. We offer that this is not acceptable for the following reasons. Number one, the school will need to cover the cost of participation for low-income families, the same way it covers breakfast and lunch today. Currently, 40% of students are on these reduced free lunches. We are a town made of strong people with a sense of individual value. I offer that all those that probably could get qual, get qualified for the food assistance today do not take advantage of it out of pride and that for the same reasons, those requiring support to participate in sports will not seek it. Removing the participation of sports programs for all that we seek to participate in them without the burden of additional costs that will, will damage our community. As my mother always said, idle hands are the devil's workshop. We respectfully request the Board of Finance fund the Ashford sport programs so we can keep our town and our schools top-notch and not be seeking additional funds in the future for security or other measures to tame our school or town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. The next on the list that I have is Tim Rhodes. Tim, are you available? I see that he's on and he is unmuted. Well, maybe we'll come back to Tim. I'll, I'll check him in a minute. So those were the people that requested an audience. I am, I am now willing to speak to any people that are on the phone or you know, would like to comment on the budgets and what you think the Board of Finance should do. Is there anybody on a phone that would like to speak?
So I'm gonna go through and I'm gonna hit the unmute button for anybody that's on the phone. If you are participating via phone and you've muted yourself, you'll have to unmute yourself on your side as well. But it looks like we have about a dozen people, so I'm gonna start doing that now. And if you'd like to speak-
Can I be heard now?
Someone's trying.
Sorry, this is Tim Rhodes. I got disconnected.
Okay, so Tim, are, you're available now?
Yes, I apologize.
Okay, no worries.
You know, some of what I wanted to say has already been said, so I'll make this brief. But I have a son in third grade at Ashford School. You know, I do understand that this time of hardship, sacrifices and cuts must be made. I do find it unfair to ask that this be borne by our school alone. You know, while I have learned a little bit about the things that I wanted to ask about the playground equipment specifically. You know, even if that was voted on two years ago, I find that with the wonderful facilities that we have available at Ashford School, perhaps that could be pushed out another year. Additionally, I would question the necessity of the generator at Nolton Hall and whether or not that could be pushed out another year as well. But I do find it difficult that we ask the administration of our school to take no pay increase and yet approve pay increases for town employees. And while I understand that they are contractual, we've already discussed the opportunity to take, ask our teachers to take a pay freeze in order to make these cuts. And they're contractual as well. They've taken four pay cuts or four pay step freezes in the last 12 years. And I'm not sure on whether or not our contractual town labor has taken any. But certainly, nobody should be getting any. I know I'm not getting one this year. And I'm lucky enough to be an essential worker who has not lost my job. But my wife has. And personally, we are of the opinion that we would happily pay the additional half mil increase in order to not see any of these cuts hit our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Chuck, excuse me, we've got a couple of people that have put their names into the chat. So since we, their names we can keep track of, maybe we should go there and let them speak just to kind of keep some semblance of order.
Yes, so the one that I'm seeing first is, and I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna apologize to start with this, the name, Nianu Stevens?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, and can you pronounce your name, please?
Yes, you were very close. I'm Nianu.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I just wanted to say that we have been living here in Ashford for 13 years. My husband and I raising our children here in Ashford. We are not from, we are not Connecticut natives. We are from Cleveland, Ohio. We grew up in a district where schools were not valued or prioritized by the citizenry. And Cleveland Public Schools are very underfunded. We recently purchased a home here in Ashford. And one of the biggest reasons that we purchased property in this town as opposed to moving somewhere that had more to offer and other ways, maybe, you know, like more in the way of activities and things to do and diversity in its various forms. The reason we chose Ashford, our number one reason was the schools. I think that the environment that is set at Ashford School by the teachers and the administrators is unparalleled. This is the kind of school that I want my kids to go to and that I want to see them thrive in because they are thriving here. And I'm very concerned about what happens in a district when schools start to not be a priority. I really do understand the uncertainty that we're facing right now and the fear that's out there and the reality that money is not what money was two months ago. But I also am very much imploring you to figure out a different way to do this. I wanna support what other callers have already said about the value of having extracurricular activities, the value of foreign languages, the value of so many things that make youth feel more connected to school, more likely to be successful and more likely to thrive. And these are the things that make Ashford a town where families come to settle and continue the beautiful culture that is here in this town. So I'm speaking very strongly in support of not making such drastic cuts to the school budget this year. And please, in looking to find a way to compromise and figure out what else can be done instead of taking away from an area that needs so much support. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Nianu. The next one on the list is Megan Champagne.
Thank you. I would like to formally request that you reconsider your proposal of a 0% budget increase and defer back to the original approval of 158,000. The current environment is one that we've never lived through before and I understand that these are unprecedented times and that there are many people who are very concerned with their financial future. I do not believe that the increase to each taxpayer would be significant enough to warrant the extremely negative impact it would have on the quality of education we offer in our town. We need to take an objective, unemotional approach in order to weigh the minimal tax increase with the much larger impact it will have on our school. If we proceed with a 0% budget increase, the changes needed in the staff and services offered will not be temporary. It is much more difficult to add staff and services than it is to cut them, especially in a town as small as ours. Additionally, a change like this will have a much larger ripple effect on the town as a whole. As most young families do, we looked at the official school report cards when purchasing a house in Ashford four years ago. And the high quality of school here was a large factor in our decision to buy a home. If you care about the value of your home, you should also care about the quality of your school. Our children are currently going through something that is difficult for even the most well-adjusted and prepared adults. Now is not the time to take a stand against tax increases. To those who have no vested interest in our schools, I beg of you to think of the community that you love and live in on a holistic level. We are talking about sacrificing the quality of education we provide to our children who are Ashford's most vulnerable citizens in favor of saving a couple of hundred of dollars a year. To me, that goes against every small-town value that I believe in and it would represent a level of self-centeredness that I don't believe our community stands for. I'd like to thank you all for your service to our community and I understand that your position is very difficult. I'd like to thank you all for your service to our community, and I understand that your position is very difficult. All I ask is that you take the responses and requests of the community into consideration. During these unprecedented times when a referendum might not be possible, please hear the voices of the people in town and make the decision that is the most requested, even if that decision is not easy. Thank you for your time.
Megan, thank you. Uh, I just want to intercede. This is, uh, for those of you on phone, this is, uh, Charles Funk, the, uh, Chairman of the Board of Finance. One of the things I want to remind everybody is that the Board of Education, all the Board of Finance can do is authorize one number, which is the bottom line. Beyond that, we have no control over how those monies are spent. That is completely within the Board of Education's purview. So we can talk, and I'm just gonna give a couple examples. We can talk about, um, the validity of a library media specialist as an example, or not. We could talk about the validity of a guidance counselor, or not. And midstream, outside of the budget process, the Board of Ed can choose at its will to institute those types of, of people outside of the budget process. My point with that is, is we can talk about the budget all we want, and the reality is, is that it is the Board of Education's purview to decide where it's gonna spend its dollars and where the priorities are. So all of you that are speaking to the Board of Finance, and I want to hear every one of you, you need to understand, all we can affect is the dol- the bottom line. Where those dollars are spent, which is what a lot of you are concerned about, is a Board of Ed issue, and all of your energies need to go in that direction to help, uh, mold the direction that you see the Ashford School going in. Uh, and, and I am not in any way belittling any of your concerns. And I want you to voice them here, but I want you to understand what control this particular board has. I, I'm gonna, uh, pre-apologize for this. I'm gonna, I think butcher this name. Michelle Maderos.
Yes, thank you. I'm logged on, uh, with Michelle. This is Phil Maderos speaking.
Thank you, Phil.
So let's affect the bottom line then. That's why we're all here. That number is what's important. The reason that your job isn't to tell them how to spend it is because they're the experts in that, and we trust them to do that. Schools are the last thing that should ever be cut. They should be held as sacrosanct as possible because cuts to those are mortgaging our future. Whether you renegotiate with town officials or ask them to make concessions or anything else you can find, if they won't make them, then we'll vote them out. Schools are gonna face a mess like has never been seen by any educator here or maybe in history before, and the schools are going to need more. They may not get more, but certainly they don't deserve less. The special education budget is going to get harder. The technology budget is going to get harder, and you are going to need, like you have now, the best teachers and staff to guide them through this. So like the strong majority of people here, I am telling you that we want you to affect that number, that bottom line, and not take the additional money from the school. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Phil. Christina Davis.
Yes, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, my name's Christina Davis. I live, uh, at four-six-seven Squahalo Road in Ashford with my husband and two kids who attend the school, and we lived in town since two thousand and three. I have submitted, uh, a letter, uh, so I won't go into too much detail beyond what I put in that letter. But I do, I guess I want to make one comment and then ask a question, and then hopefully if you can answer that question, that would be great. So my overall comment, uh, as many others who have spoken tonight, is that I would hope that the Board of Finance could return the hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars to the budget that they previously approved. While it feels like the world has changed, uh, with the pandemic, technically, nothing has changed. As far as Ashford's income is concerned, because we just simply don't know. And I don't think we're gonna know for several more months exactly what's gonna happen with state, federal, and local tax collections. So I think making a rash decision and asking the Board of Education to go with a zero percent increase is, is, is unwise. I understand where it comes from, but I just don't think, I don't think it's in the best interest of the town, uh, or the students, or the teachers, or the staff. One other comment, uh, is I know a lot of times what seems to come up from critics of the education budget is the idea that there is, the, the school is top-heavy. There's, there's a lot of places you could cut. We don't need that assistant principal. I just would say, from my personal view, as someone who is in that school when I'm allowed to be in the school every day, interacting with teachers and administrators, uh, every administrator in that school is working a full-time, if not more, job. There is, there is no fat in the Ashford school system to cut. And any cuts that you make are going to come out of programming, and it's going to negatively impact the students. So those are my two comments. And then my question is, in regards to the seventy-one thousand dollars that needs to be pumped into the Ashford Fire Department, and, and you explained that it's because Eastford has ended its fifty-year relationship with the town of Ashford. My question is, well, Eastford must be doing something that is saving them money. What is it that they're doing, and is Ashford looking into that for its ambulance service? I, I know lots of towns, small towns in the area, Scotland, Hampton, are exploring ways to maybe use, I know it's like Scotland is trying to use Willimantic, uh, services and, you know. Are there areas that we could pursue to save money on that side of the equation, uh, like the town of Eastford is doing?
Uh, that's a good cre- question, Christina. Thank you for your comments. Is Wayne, Ralph, is Wayne here?
I, I don't think he is, but I think I can answer that question.
Hey Chuck, Chuck and Ralph, uh, this is Paul Varga. Um, Wayne is with me if you want him or I to comment on that.
Ralph, do you think Wayne would be a good choice to comment? I think he would.
I, I think he would. I can also add a little bit of a comment at the end.
Okay, Wayne, if you've got a comment, uh, about, you know, why we're doing what we're doing, uh, and the service that, uh, Eastford is now, uh, employing and how it's different than what we did.
Yeah, Chuck, and to the people who are listening, this is Wayne. Somebody's microphone is squealing. Hello, Chuck?
Yes, there you go.
Okay, it was a squealing microphone. That's why it stopped. The services that we provided to Eastford for forty-five years was we covered their ambulance service for them. They paid us a fee. What the town of Eastford has done is they are going into a consortium with several other towns and trying to have a private ambulance service cover the three towns. Okay, they're saving a little bit of money, but what they're getting is a longer response time. In reference to what the young lady said about the town of Scotland, that is incorrect. Willimantic is not covering Scotland. Scotland has paid employees, just like Ashford. The seventy-one thousand dollars is what we lose as income, which pays for the EMS service in the town of Ashford. That's why we requested the money from the Board of Finance and the Board of Select.
Thank you, Wayne. Ralph, you've got some further comments?
Yes, uh, I was at a council of governments meeting this morning, which includes those towns east of us. And they, they are getting ready to sign a contract. They haven't signed a contract as of today. But I also wanted to, uh, state that, uh, the town, the town of Ashford Fire Department for the last close to fifty years has not billed those people in Eastford that could not afford to pay, just like they have in Ashford. Uh, and I don't think that's going to happen any longer, and I don't think the town of Eastford, uh, personnel know that. Uh, so that's part of the situation. If you can't afford to pay, the fire department didn't bill you. They billed you only, only because we had to send a bill, but they didn't have to pay. And, and I would like to make one other comment, Chuck. I, I heard earlier on, I didn't realize, or, or maybe one of the school administrators can answer the question as to whether the teachers forgave their raises for this year.
Um, this is Dr. Longo. I could give you an answer to that if you'd like.
Thanks. Yes, please.
Um, the teachers have two aspects to their raise. One is, um, their step, where their steps were, it takes thirteen or fourteen years for a teacher to reach their top salary. They have foregone that. There is no step. They're on a step freeze for this coming year. Um, they did not forego the, um, one and a half percent pay raise that they were gonna get. It's a very small raise. It's only one and a half percent. Um, but they did not forego that. They fore- forewent the, um, the, uh, step. They are on a step freeze for one year, which is, I believe, the time they've done that.
Thank you. Thank you.
And, and Chuck, when you get a chance, I would like to speak. I just didn't want to interrupt the taxpayers.
Yep, yep, we'll get to you, Jim. Thanks. Um, next on the list is John Lippert, the Board of, the, the Chair of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Chuck. Hi, Board of Finance. Thank you for listening to so many people. As Chuck said, I'm John Lippert, Chairperson of the Board of Education. I ask you to restore the previously agreed-to budget for the school. I remind you that, uh, we are not here to decide what is the appropriate budget for the school. We already did that. We are here to decide if the budget should be decreased because of the pandemic. Some in town have been negatively impacted financially by the pandemic. Those that are in financial trouble need help to pay rent and feed their families. I applaud you for wanting to help. However, reducing the school budget is not the way to do it. Reducing the Board of Education budget to a zero increase lowers the mil rate by about one-half of a mil. That's somewhere in the range of two to ten dollars per month per family, depending on the value of their property. And the people that are most likely to need financial assistance because of the pandemic are at the lower end of those numbers. Apartments and don't directly pay property taxes. They don't need three dollars. Need unemployment pay, food assistance, low-interest small-business loans, et cetera. Those at the higher end of that scale could generally afford the half-mil increase and are happy to pay it to maintain a high-quality school. And what else is the case with the people in financial distress due the, due to the pandemic? They tend to have children and need a good school, mostly paid for by people that can afford it. It's fine. It would be a double dose of distress for those that need help to instead be offered a lower-quality school. As one parent, uh, wrote to us, quote, "If the budget is passed as proposed," meaning the zero increase, "it would have a severe negative impact on the students." In short, the pandemic is not a reason to reduce the school budget. Thank you, Board of Finance.
Thank you, John. Um, I'm gonna, I, I, I want, there are at least three or four more people that would like to speak. We're at eight oh six. This meeting's supposed to, uh, adjourn at eight fifteen, but I want everyone to have a chance. So Lisa, uh, you don't have a last name listed here, but Lisa, if you'd like to speak now, that would be great.
My name is Lisa Santola. I live at two oh five Seacare Road. Um, I'd like to start with a question. With all of the, you said you got sixty-something letters, um, regarding this meeting today. Can you tell me in broad terms the percentage of people who were in favor or against the current budget with a zero percent increase for the school?
Yeah, that's, that's very easy. I had, uh, fifty-four, uh, people that wrote, uh, varying degrees of depth in their letters, some as short as one sentence, uh, one as many as three pages. So fifty-four, uh, were in favor of, uh, increasing, uh, the school's budget. And I had four that wrote, um, articulate letters, uh, opposing any sort of increase.
Okay, thank you for that information. I don't know if that seat benefits anyone. I have no other device behind me. What should I do? Can I speak now?
Yeah, Lisa, you're up.
Okay, um, so, uh-
No, we're, we're wrestling with technology here.
Yes, I understand. Um, I guess my, I will keep my comment quick, is that I have a direct response to your comment that, you know, we're, we're not deciding on the school budget here. I, I think that, and that perhaps all of us, the hundred and sixty-nine of us, might somewhat be misguided for being here and speaking in favor of the school budget. The reason why we're all here, at least I'll speak, the reason why I'm here is because I have been paying attention to our school budget. And there, a zero percent increase doesn't mean that we're just maintaining the status quo. Is that because of the way the world works, is that things cost more. And so the increase, even the April sixteenth or whatever increase that was approved, still had cuts to what the desired budget was. And so if we continue to, if we say a zero percent increase, it, it isn't just, oh, just get by with what you have because it's a crazy time. It's, it's a real cut. And so that's why we're here, is because, you know, the school board has already looked at, oh, well, what does a zero percent increase mean? It means cuts. So now we're all here to say, don't make those cuts. You are the people that have the power to not make the cuts. And because we, the people, can't vote this year because of the pandemic, and that is a real consequence of the pandemic, is that we are all here writing and speaking so that you don't cut the budget. We want you to do your job of listening to the people when we say what we want our tax dollars, our tax dollars, to go for. And we are all here saying that we want-
Thank you, Lisa. I just want to speak slightly to Lisa's and then we'll move, we'll move on. One of the things that I'm also very cognizant of is that the, uh, Board of Education and the administration at the school has a platform to be able to rally, uh, the responses that we have. I think all of these responses are genuine, and I genuinely want to hear them. But I also would like everybody to be cognizant that there is a, there is a very easy mechanism to get all of you engaged in something like this, uh, you know, in a public hearing. Because you are all engaged with this one particular institution that can send out the word. And it's a word we need to hear. Uh, that's not my point. The point is, there's no countervailing, um, voice that can rally another opinion. So this board has to be very careful in looking at how the budget's gonna impact the whole town. The other point that I'd like to make with Lisa, uh, and the other people that have spoken, is, uh, we also have to take into mind what we're, what we're reading outside of the town of Ashford. So on Saturday, the Hartford Current, uh, published an article headline, top news, front page, that the, uh, the state of Connecticut is down at least seven hundred million dollars in revenue. And the way they're gonna make that up is, uh, some of it- And the way they're going to make that up is some of it with the rainy day fund and some of it is going to be cutting expenditures. This board has to be cognizant that resources that we're counting on, which are in excess of $4 million, could be cut. It's something we have to contemplate. It's a reality that we have to pay attention to. So again, just understand there needs to be balance as best we can. Frank Bussie is up next. And again, I've got a number of people that would like to speak. And we've got technically two minutes left. But we'll keep going until we hear you. So please be brief. Thank you. Frank? Frank Bussie, are you there? Jane Urban.
I'm here, but my microphone, yes, my microphone keeps remuting me, or I keep being remuted, but I am here.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Jane Urban. I am a member of the Ashford Board of Education, but more importantly, I have three children who attend Ashford School. At the April 16th meeting, when the decision was made to go back on the Board of Finance's prior decision to allow an approximately $157,000 increase to the school budget, I asked at the end of the meeting that the Board of Finance be open minded. Because every year I felt like when the Board of Ed comes to the Board of Finance, we're told, yeah, no, there's not enough money, there's not enough, there's not enough, and we can't support any sort of meaningful increase. We haven't been able to add new programs that other towns around us have added. We haven't been able to kind of improve resources that we've wanted to upgrade or improve. And yet, every member of the Ashford School community, parents, teachers, administrators, staff, has stepped up and found ways to innovate and do more with less. That cannot continue to happen. And we cannot allow the current situation to be an excuse to gut this school. And that is what these cuts will mean. We have to, you say it's the Board of Ed's decision.
Mike, was that Jane's, uh, mic? Or are you getting feedback from me?
I, I'm monitoring who's got active microphones and I think what it is is just with the, there's a slowdown in the connection, so the mic is moving faster than the speakers and vice versa. So I'm, if we keep getting that, I'm just going to have to keep muting everybody so that it doesn't, we can all hear by the end of the night. So just try to keep yourselves muted. And if I, if I mute everybody, you know, but we have some members that are participating by phone, so if I hit mute all, I've got to make sure I unmute them. So I'm, I'm trying to monitor, but I'm doing, so just try to keep yourselves muted. It's, it's not any one person from what I can see.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Jane, go ahead and finish your thought.
Okay, I was just going to say, when we moved here, when my husband started talking with his colleagues at the University of Connecticut, every one of them told us to live in Mansfield. They said, that's the only town around here that fully supports their schools and that's where you want to be. We moved to Ashford because we loved this school. We reviewed the records. We thought it was good. We can't compete with the neighboring towns for people to move into the town if we don't keep investing in our school. So please, I'm begging the Board of Finance to do what you said you would do on April 16th, which is listen to the public. There is a large demand from the public to restore the original increase to the Board of Ed's budget. And on top of that, Chuck, I think it's a little unfair for you to say that the town doesn't have the same poll. Because this represents a good portion of our town at this meeting, or at least the members who come out and vote. And we are here asking you and begging you to restore the original increase to the budget. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. I think I'm losing track here. Where are we?
Hello, this is Dr. Longo. Can I speak now?
Um, go ahead, Jim. That's great.
Okay, I have, after listening to everyone speak, I have several sort of unconnected points, but I would like to make them all very quickly. First of all, I, I attend on a regular basis meetings of all the regional superintendents. We do it through Zoom. And all the region is going through the same thing, except we're the only town that has done this and cut our schools back to a zero budget. All the other towns are finding another way to do it. And they're also understanding that if they, they cut the quality of their school, that they're damaging their, their, their property values and they're also damaging the promise that they made to the people who moved into town. So that's one point. The second point is, is that the decisions that are made, we're to apply the cuts after you cut the bottom line. It took five hours at the last board meeting to make those decisions. They were, they were really struggling with all the possibilities. And what they tried to do was make the cuts that were least impactful on students' instruction. And I think that the Board of Ed did a wonderful job. However, it's a very, very difficult task when you get given a budget that's less than you need. Remember, the cost of medical benefits and things go up every year, and that price going up means everything else has to go down. Another thing is, is that John Lippert made a point earlier about how and I heard several other taxpayers make the same point about how you have to just weigh what it's going to cost per month more for each taxpayer in Ashford and what the effect is on the school. I mean, to lose sports, to lose field trips, to lose supplies, to lose equipment, to lose technology, to lose teachers, it's, it's just devastating. But it's the only way we can make up that kind of money. So I wanted you to understand that it's all about.
I think Jim's muted.
He's not muted on our end.
All right. Well, we've, we've lost him then.
A referendum and enough enough people right here to pass a vote in a referendum. So what I'm suggesting is that your thing I would like, and you're in first grade and you're learning how, you're firming up your ability to read, or you're in third grade and you're firming up your understanding of multiplication or something, you don't get a do-over. This, this year is, if you lose it, you lose it. You don't get to do it over. It's not something that we can make up. So what I'm asking you is to not punish the children and to take away another year. They've lost a third of a year now. They're getting educated by the teachers, but it's not the same. So we're hoping to make it up when we get to school, but you can't make up the fact that you lost a teacher or you lost your supplies, you lost your computers. So please, restore that $156,000. I was under the impression that you might do it if you had enough community support for doing it, and it looks like you do. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Kimberly Coatley.
Hello, I will be very brief. This is Kimberly Coatley. I did send a letter in. I am in full support of not cutting the school budget after our original cuts. The one question I had is, if I understood correctly, the Board of Finance is making the final vote and we are not going to referendum. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. We will, after this public hearing, we'll have a special meeting and what we're going to do is make motions as to what we're going to do with budgets and we're going to send them to, I'm going to presume the May 20th meeting. And it'll be a special meeting for the Board of Finance to actually vote on what it is we decide to do after this meeting in the special meeting. So we will make motions as to the budgets that we feel are appropriate for the board to then end up voting on, on May 20th, which would then allow further public comment if, if you so wish.
All right, thank you.
Tess Grous. Tess, are you there?
Hold on, she's muted. Let me see if I can.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Um, hi, my name is Tess Grous and I'm also a member of the Board of Ed. I do not have any children in Ashford School System, but we moved to this town so my kids could attend E.O. Smith High School. Um, during this pandemic, my husband's hours are, have been cut down and I have lost my job because of this pandemic. I believe in education. I believe that the teachers need to be paid what a competitive salary. I believe in the sports program that was cut. I believe in a lot of things, but I think that I want to, because two other board members spoke up, I thought it was only fair that the town would hear all the voices on the Board of Ed. And so I'm in agreement of the cuts. I'm, I understand that we have to do what we have to do in regards to this town to, to be wise stewards of the money that we have. So I, I don't want my taxes to go up. I, I think that there's some things that we can do. I hear compromises from both sides. And I think, Chuck, that that's something that we might, you might, as a Board of Finance, might want to look further into. I heard from a lot of teachers and I, and I do agree with them, but somewhere we have to sacrifice. And I think that perhaps the teachers and the town administrators can come to some sort of compromise, either in pay freeze or an increase in, excuse me, forego the increase in, in raises, something, something has to give. Nobody likes cuts, but, but here we are. So so I'm thinking that, that perhaps we can, we can come to some sort of compromise.
Thank you, Tess. I'd like to reach out to Frank Bussie again. And this is Mike D'Amato, too. If you could just see if Frank is able to speak. For some reason, he was muted when he tried speaking.
Okay, let me take a look. So on my end, it shows that his mic is not muted, so he should be able to speak. It says, I mean, now it says, it says that the mic is active, so I don't know if there's a connection issue on his end.
Frank, uh, which I think might be actually Chris, but I'm not sure, did send a letter to the Board of Finance. So we, we know what he said. He was in, in support of the Board of Ed's increased request. And that's about what I can say for him on his behalf. Carolyn Trotta.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my husband spoke earlier and we have a fourth and a sixth grader in the school system. And I was at the March 12th Board of Finance meeting and you wanted us to cut 220 and the Board of Ed could only come up with the 181. It was painful, but you know, they did it and you accepted the compromise. And, you know, then everything kind of went haywire. And then I hear on the we went back and wanted more money. I was on the Board of Ed meeting last week and it is very difficult to decide what to do. I was in favor of them doing the same thing that we did on the 12th of March and saying, you know, we can't give you the 156. I was concerned if we gave you 156 that you'd be like, you just take it and run with it. This isn't the time to start cutting from the school. I'll echo everyone else. You know, we are here because of the school, the quality of the teachers and everything that they bring. It's, it's an amazing place to be. My daughter is on, on the robotics team. And when we were competing in Manchester, I met a woman from Madison. She was from New York City. She moved to Madison so her kid could grow up in, in the country, you know, in more of like a country setting and be in a good school. She said the public school was awful, so she put her kid in a private school in Madison. And it was their first competition. And she could not believe the quality of our two teachers that were there with us at the robotics, all the teams that we fielded there at the robotics team. She thought Ashford School was a private school because she knows there's a lot of private schools up in this corner. That's the quality of the kids that, that the opportunities that they're given because of the teachers. These teachers go above and beyond. You don't even know how much. It's more than a full-time job, but they love it. They love these children. When we moved back here three years ago, I left a message on the, the principal's assistant's phone and she called me back and she was, she was thrilled that we were coming back. We walked into that school and every teacher knew my kid's name, even though we've been gone for so many years. It's an amazing place to be and we, our kids need this extra because when they get to E.O. Smith, they're behind because they don't have what Wellington, especially what Mansfield has. So I implore you to reinstate the money back to the Board of Ed. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. There's a couple of people that have commented that they're not sure of the meeting schedule. This meeting started at seven. It was scheduled to end at 8:15, where then the Board of Finance then has a special meeting to contemplate what we've heard tonight. That was scheduled to end at nine. That's where the time comes from. When we had a different schedule before executive orders, then the selectmen were going to have a special meeting after our special meeting. So there was a lineup of, of business that needed to be done tonight. So we have now changed that because of the executive orders that have been a moving target over the last few weeks. The selectmen are not meeting because they bestowed the power to vote on your behaves to the Board of Finance. So the special meeting that's immediately following this one is where we're going to decide what we're doing with budgets. There will be motions to that effect of where we're sending the boat, the, the budgets to vote, which the Board of Finance will vote on your behaves. May 20th is my best understanding at this point. So I just wanted to clarify that for all of you. I believe that everyone has had an opportunity to speak. I see there's one last person that just clicked in and I would like to have her speak and then that will, we will then conclude this meeting. So Carrie, if you would like to speak, that would be good.
Hi, this is Carrie Wren. I'm a mom and I have three children in the Ashford School. I won't repeat what other parents have said. I do feel that we need to keep the budget and support our school system and give us back the $156,000 to support our children. I do have a question about the voting, since there's concern that all the letters and the support from this meeting is one-sided and only coming from individuals who are not in support of the 0% increase, why we can't vote, why we can't do something electronically? I know in the chat room, someone said Vernon was able to vote and that the, especially with something as important as this, it seems very tough to keep it into the hands of five or six people on a committee who I don't even know if they have children in our school system. And I just think there's enough of us out here who want to vote, who have a voice, who don't feel that letters or even talking is getting through because even just by some comments, it does seem like the mind is made up. And so can you just speak on why we can't vote, why we're not allowed to to do something electronically to be able to figure out if there is another side, if there is a whole other community we're not hearing from, then maybe we do put something out there electronically to try to figure out where people are at because it just seems that. Because it just seems that, yes, you're letting us speak, but I'm not sure if we're really getting heard. Thank you.
Carrie, thank you.
Can I split to that, Chuck?
Sure.
You know, since March 10th, we've had a number-
This is Ralph Fletcher, our first selectman that's speaking.
Since March 10th, we've had 35 executive orders come down from the governor. And Chuck has held out to the last possible day trying to hold a referendum. We have been told by the state of Connecticut that the Board of Finance has to vote on the budget. There can be no referendum. And I praise Chuck for holding out over as long as he's done. He's done a barrel of work over the last few months.
Thanks, Ralph. Just to follow up with Carrie. Carrie, your question's valid. You cannot imagine how much this board would like to forego the responsibility of voting on all your behaves. I would like nothing more in the world than to have a referendum. But we have been mandated to vote on your behaves for all of our safety with COVID-19. It's not a responsibility that I enjoy. It's not, we, so to follow up a little farther on this, we, I have had multiple conversations with our town attorney. I have brought up Vernon. Our town attorney has, and actually there's been at least two on a couple of conference calls with me because I have explored all of those avenues and they are imploring us to not even consider it. It is, it opens up a can of worms and it has to do with access, people's ability to get access to vote. We have done things a certain way in this town forever, 50, 60, 80 years. I don't, I don't even know how long. So this is a, this is a once in a lifetime, let's hope, event where we have been asked to vote on your behaves. None of us want to do it. We are doing it because we have to. So I'm hoping, and again, I want to reassure everybody, I have talked to all of our members. And we are definitely keeping an open mind and we are asking, I have asked all the members to please listen to each and every one of you and we will try to come to a fair decision. I want to also extend comments to people that are on the phone. I forgot that I didn't have access to you via the chat. So if a few of you that are on the phone would like to make a comment, I'd like to give you some time.
Okay, I'm going to go through and unmute the callers and if you have something to say, we'll go one by one and if not, just re-mute yourself. Looks like we have maybe about 10 or 12.
Again, if we could keep your comments-
Chuck, you're muted.
Yep. Please keep your comments as brief as possible and I apologize for the format. It's the best that we can do. So phone speakers, phone speakers, please, you know, somebody start.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, who's this?
This is Nicole Rice. I just wanted to put my two cents in and tell you that our family believes that the most recent reduction to the school budget is way too detrimental to the students. And it is not worth the reduction in the mill rate. So my family respectfully asks that you restore the $156,000 to the Board of Education. Thanks.
Thanks, Nicole.
Okay, so all of the callers, at least on my end, are unmuted. So if you're participating via phone, should be able to speak if you choose.
Are there any other phone callers that want to speak? Okay, I think what we will do is I would like to close the public hearing. I want to thank each and every one of you. I definitely, and we definitely hear your passion and we are going to now close this section of the meeting and we will then open up the special meeting where the Board of Finance will deliberate what to do moving forward.
Chuck, before you do that, can I say one last thing?
And who's this?
My name is Erica. I just, I see something in the chat by Carolyn Trotta and I feel like it, I know the chat is not an official part of this meeting. I feel like what she has to say here should be. She writes that this meeting was publicized on the front page of the Ashford Citizen. Anyone could have come on this call for or against. So I think you are saying that this is a one-sided representation is not accurate. You have given official legal public notice and anyone who wanted to be here is here. These are the people that you need to represent on your vote board. Thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Erica. Anybody else? All right, we're going to close the public hearing meeting.
Wait. Is there a chance for Board of Finance to respond to any of this?
Can we do that in the special meeting? Is it relevant in the special meeting during deliberation?
It is. Is it going to have the same audience?
Go ahead.
Well, I just want to respond. I mean, we have a lot of parents that are here tonight.
This is John Kopeck.
Yeah, sorry, this is John Kopeck, who have been provided their information from the Board of Education, whose sole interest was the school. There is more to that here. Me personally, I am not concerned about, right now, about the the increase in the mill rate for the Board of Education budget. Where I am concerned is this is our only chance to have an impact on our whole town's bottom line. We are likely facing cuts from the state, cuts from the federal government, people without jobs that are not going to be able to pay their taxes. So regardless of what we give the budget, the Board of Education for a budget, if we cannot collect those tax dollars and those revenues from all those other entities, we don't have the money to give to them. It would mean hitting our reserve funds for that, which aren't that plentiful to begin with because we have a smaller budget as a smaller town. So there's a lot more that goes into this than just funding the school and funding kids. This town spends 80% roughly of its money on educating children. So when you're looking for places to cut in a time like this, unfortunately, that's going to be a lion's share because it is the lion's share of the budget. I don't want to do this. I have four kids in the Ashford Public Schools, okay? I have 1% of the school population in my household here. I don't want to see cuts to the school, but if the town cannot pull the money in to give the school for their budget, we are in a world of trouble. If we deplete our reserves, which also keep in mind, the, there's stuff out there now where we have, not forgiveness, but delayed payments. We have to cover that in the meantime so people can put off their mortgage payments. Well, now it also can put off property tax payments. That is going to affect us. That all comes out and we're hoping if they don't get extended a second time, that we have enough cash flow to cover that until the tax bills start coming in. But without any of those things and we hit that, our reserve funds, we lose our bond rating. Our bond rating is already in trouble for other circumstances that I don't even want to get into right now. But we need a roof on the school next year. So all of these things, these things are connected. There are so many different pieces to this puzzle that have not been mentioned because the Board of Education isn't tasked with those things, so they didn't consider those things. But it is the reality in these times that those things do have to be considered. And again, I have four kids in the school system. I don't want to be considering those things, but they do have to be considered. Thank you.
Chuck, you're muted.
When is reelection season for the Board of Finance?
It's staggered and God, I hope you vote me out. Really? This is an unbelievable amount of work. So if anybody, and I've gotten some threatening letters and I'm going to end, I think, looking a little annoyed. Anybody that's talking about getting rid of Board of Finance members, man, I want to be top on the list. This is not fun.
Hey Chuck, is the, this is Maureen Kay. Is the deliberation by the Finance Board open to the public or is that closed?
This meeting, I was going to explain, is part of this go-to meeting session. So we are going to close the public hearing and then we are going to open the Board of Finance special meeting, which is a deliberation within the Board of Finance. In that particular agenda, I do not have public comments. At my discretion, I may change my mind, although I don't know because I want, I want this to move along.
It's a special meeting, Chuck. You can't add-
It's a special meeting. So, so I can't even have you speak because I don't have it in the agenda. So this is, this is the time to speak. So we're going to close the public hearing and we will then open the special Board of Finance meeting. So Valerie, you're all set?
Wait. Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to be patient with me. I have two people that I'd like to have speak. Maureen Everhart, you have a question?
No, Chuck, that's this Maureen Kay. I asked my question. I was just asking if the deliberation was open to the public to listen to when you answer that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Catherine, you'd like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mike, for taking me off mute. On the, on the job of being Chair of the Board of Finance, it is a very heavy responsibility. I happen to know that John has taken time away from his livelihood, his work for this. I'm sorry, not John. Chuck has. I know because I was there and we're talking about things like 10 days a year or more. In his particular case, he has been meeting during the day with people he was able to speak with. He has been reading all of the letters. I know I've had a few conversations with him. This weighs heavily on him. It weighs heavily on every member of the Board of Finance, just as what you're doing on the Board of Ed weighs heavily on you. This is not a town that threatens people. This has never been like this. These are very unusual circumstances. My hope is that everybody settles back, gets a little less in everybody else's faces about this. This is really very serious stuff and there's a lot of misinformation that's gone around. There have been difficulties in the financial department at the school. They have, we've gotten past that. We know that our audit was late. That affects our credit rating. There were a lot of things that have gone on that the public may not be aware of. So I know that, in fact, when people talk about taking money out of what they call the emergency fund, that's like borrowing from your, not even borrowing, that's taking money out of your savings account to pay your electric bill. That is exactly what that is. So that's not a very good option here. And no one wants the children to have less education. Responsibility to give them the best that we can. Because there are a number of other people in this town who have not been on this call, I think all of you need to recognize the fact that many of them are not as technically savvy. Many of them don't have iPhones. Okay, so please stop and think about some of the other people who live in this town. That's part of the heavy responsibility. We, where someone else says, you know, that people can afford to lose 10, 20, $30 a month, that's not necessarily the case when the benefits that these people have have been cut. So again, this is a very weighty responsibility, not entered into lightly. A lot of analysis is done, a lot of reaching out to state officials across to other towns as to what they're doing. So I would hope that you would understand that the Board of Finance is working very hard to come up with something that is acceptable or no, that is of, keeps us at an even keel as we go into some pretty heavy waters. So that's all I have to say tonight. I'll be listening in on the Board of Finance's regular meeting. I guess the only other thing is when we have that other meeting on May 20th that the Board of Finance will be conducting, it is my understanding that at that meeting, the only action that can be taken on the budget at that point in time is to cut it. You cannot increase it at that point in time. We're following the regular model for how the budget is proposed, presented and presented again at what we call the equivalent of a town meeting. At town meetings like that, you cannot increase the budget. So the next meeting that the Board of Finance has is probably going to be the one that is the most decisive. Chuck, would you agree?
Thank you. Yes, that was put very, very well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We are now actually really closing the public hearing. And we will now open the Board of Finance special meeting to be held virtually via this go-to meeting format.
If it's clear, that meeting invite is in a different meeting notice or is it, is everybody staying on this meeting?
Yeah, you just stay on this meeting. Nobody has to go anywhere. We're just transitioning from, from the the closed public hearing to now the open Board of Finance special meeting. And we'll be following the agenda until I ask for something to change. So we're going to call this meeting to order at 8:49. We have all of the regular members here. I'm going to do a roll call. Butch, you're here?
Yes.
Esther? Esther's here. Can't hear her, but she's here. John Kopeck's here. Carl Fallsgraph?
I'm here. Hello?
I'm here.
Jesse?
I'm here.
Who am I missing?
Judy.
Judy and Garth.
I'm here.
Hi Judy, Garth?
Garth's here.
Good. All right. So we have all the regular members. We do not need to seat alternates. Communications, this is actually tied to our approve the minutes. It's something that I want to attach to our minutes. At the Board of Finance special meeting, Tuesday, April 16th, there was a board member that made reference to the Ashford Dairy Bar and their tax burden. And at the time, I didn't know exactly if I needed to or how to respond. However, I felt that that particular comment ended up driving a lot of discussion. So Linda Gagny, our treasurer, wanted me to clarify. So in response to the tax collector, in response to comments made at your meeting on April 16th, 2020, I'd like to clarify the statements made regarding the Ashford Dairy Bar and the amount of taxes paid per year. According to my records, the amount of property taxes paid on that property for the current fiscal year that we are in totals 7,000- totals $7,569.86. Uh, and then she copied the accounts below to verify that. The total amount of taxes quoted at the Board of Finance meeting, which was $80,000, more accurate when applied to some of our apartment complexes. The highest amount of tax paid during the fiscal year for an apartment complex was $74,897.74. And the Connecticut Light and Power paid the town a personal property tax of $20871. I list these properties as examples of the range of taxes attributed to properties. I wanted that to be clarified, I want it on the public record. And, uh, this document will be attached to, uh, our approved minutes of the special meeting, uh, because I felt that that comment ended up driving a lot of discussion in a, in an unwarranted direction. So that's the only communication that I have. Uh, so now we're up to approving the minutes of the special meeting Tuesday, April 16th, 2020.
Could I, could I speak for a minute, Chuck? It's Ralph.
Certainly, this is Ralph Fletcher.
Uh, we, we had a Council of Governments meeting this morning and, uh, we're all concerned about the amount of money that the state is spending right now. We're, of course, we're using our rainy day fund. And as you, people on the Board of Finance are well aware, our revenues from the state have been going down on an annual basis. And, and we are more concerned about next year and, and the impact that this is going to have on us. Uh, you know, we've already put the, the revenues in, uh, in this, into this budget, but I'm not sure they're all gonna stand up. I just wanted to let you know that.
Thanks, Ralph. Uh, so back to the agenda item, um, approve minutes of the special meeting Tuesday, April 16th. Anybody want to make a motion?
Some move, Carl Fallsgraph?
Second, Angie DeSanto.
Uh, any further discussion, clarifications?
No.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Uh, opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Uh, I need somebody to make a motion, uh, to switch the agenda item, uh, 5A, which is approve the budgets, uh, uh, with 5B. I put those in backwards. I would rather approve the date that we're sending these to so that we can include them in the narrative of our, um, uh, uh, motion. Uh, so I need somebody to approve, uh, or to make a motion to switch, uh, 5B and 5A in order. Is that Jesse that said yes?
I'll second it.
Wait, 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 wait. Who did what, please?
Uh, Valerie, Jesse, Jesse was the, um, uh, made the motion and Angie seconded. No, Judy seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Um, this is really just trying to, you know, get some ducks in a row. Uh, approve the date. Um, I would like to, I would like to have this, or I think we should have this, uh, on Wednesday, May 20th, which would have been, uh, the date on our budget calendar for, um, the, uh, the town, uh, meeting. Um, and so I would like from this meeting, the public to have the two weeks that they typically would have before a town meeting, before we vote. Uh, so, uh, at that meeting, we will vote, uh, to approve budgets and then we will set a mill rate. So is there anybody that would make a motion to set the vote by the Board of Finance for Wednesday, May 20th? Who's this?
Judy.
Okay, Judy, Judy first.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second, Angie DeSanto.
Um, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, um, opposed? Abstain? Motion, motion passes. All right, so now we're to the exciting part. So the first, the first motion that we would be considering, and we'll, we'll have discussion, but the first motion we would be, uh, considering is a motion to approve, approve an appropriation of X dollars for the general government budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021, to be adopted by the Board of Finance Special Meeting on May 20th, 2020, to be held virtually. So we've heard from the, uh, public. I guess what we need to do is decide what we're doing. Does anybody want to, uh, to the general government budget? And, or the budgets in general before we make a, uh, a decision?
Doc, uh, this Carl, can I speak a moment?
Carl, go ahead.
Uh, number, number one is I think we have to look at them both. Uh, number two is, uh, we have to consider raising the Board of Ed budget, but I'd like to speak to that a moment. I, I think that, I think we're gonna have to raise it. But, but I just have some questions that I'd like, that I'd like to, to, for people to think about. Uh, when the Board of Ed addressed our last cuts, I wasn't at the meeting, but, but I heard from several people that they didn't address several items that have significant savings this year, that they could have lost that by spending those dollars next year and, and kept a lot of things in place. And, uh, the diesel fuel, bus maintenance, trash pickup, uh, just several items that are gonna have a, a large amount of dollars left over this year. And that, that's all I want to say about that. And the other thing is that, is that several people talked about raises at town hall. If they looked at the Selectmen's Budget, a lot of townspeople got their salaries cut. And, and those increases were for the contracted positions that we had to go outside of town to get to cover what Mike Gardner did before he retired. So that's not really raises. And then I guess we have to decide. The other thing is if we give money back to the school, it is my opinion, we have to give money back to the town also. Because there's people there that got, took pay cuts and lost jobs already for next year. So I was, I'm open to hear how much people want to give back.
Chuck, I have a couple of things too that I, I have questions on. This is Judy.
Go ahead, Judy.
Um, so one of the questions I have is directed towards the town. Like, um, what expenses have gone up since this disaster has happened? Like, are they spending additional funds on, um, cleaning or have they bought, you know, gear or something for the firehouse? You know, what are the additional funds, um, on the town side? And the other part I'm having, um, issues with is the school. So, um, I don't know what their contractual obligations are, um, how much they are. I'd like to know that. Um, and how much are they saving? Like Carl brought up some of the things like with fuel. How much are they saving with, you know, gym classes or field trips or at these funds that are gonna be rolled over to next year? And I also heard that, um, there's a Federal Care Act that had $51,000, um, designated towards the school. I mean, it's not here, I might be counting chickens before they're hatched, but you know, there, there's a few things that are happening here that I, I'd like more detail.
Um, I, I hear what you're saying, Judy. As far as the, uh, funds to the school from the federal government, I don't think we can count on those. And those, as best we can tell, need to be allocated towards COVID-related, uh, expenses. As best I can tell, that's my understanding of that. That is also stuff that is only involved in this year's budget at this point, the existing fiscal year. It doesn't affect next year's budget in the least. And again, as you know, um, we, we have no ability to manage the Board of Ed's, uh, resources. They can spend those resources however they see fit. Um, so it's, it, to my mind, it's unfair, uh, to ask them to speculate on dollars that they don't have yet. I understand your, 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 your query, but I don't think there, I honestly don't think they have a way to answer that.
Okay, yeah, I'm just kind of wondering how that works, that's all.
Yeah, hold on one second, Judy. Uh, Jim, do you have a thought?
I can give you an answer on part of it. We're not allowed to roll any money over into next year's budget. Um, what can happen is we can, um, not spend it and it would go into our non, um, uh, uh, our 1%, which I believe is 2% fund now, but that can only be used for capital improvements on the facilities, unless the Board of Finance were to allow it to be applied. And we've already offered to give it back to the town, whatever we save to give back to the town if the town needs it. And we're not, we, we've offered to give that back, um, and it can be applied to next year's budget. To, you know, these are unusual circumstances, but we are not as a Board of Ed allowed to have any rollover funds.
Okay.
Thanks. Um, uh, Judy, are you, are you set or do you have a, a, a couple of things to say?
Um, so the contractual obligations, like if they, is there a, a sum that the school is contractually obligated to? Like a minimum sum so that, um, we wouldn't lose any teachers? That, you know, maybe they can say, um, they promised not to lay off teachers if there was, you know, that contractual obligation was covered.
Once again, I can answer that, but I hate butting into your meeting, you know?
Uh, go ahead, Jim.
Um, what, any cut above $49,000 begins to cut into faculty and sports. Um, we've cut the $49,000 would mean cutting our technology, cutting our paper, cutting our supplies, cutting our equipment, cutting everything. So once you, once you cut us, which is 156,871, the first $49,000 we were able to cover by cutting things that didn't require cutting people. Um, but, but once you pass that $49,000 mark, you're cutting people.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Judy, you're, you're still on?
Yes, I said thank you.
Okay, you're all set?
I believe so for the moment.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Catherine, uh, asked to speak, I would like to hear her.
Let me turn on my microphone. There you are. I know, but they've moved.
Catherine, are you there?
Come on.
She shut it off instead of turning it on.
Catherine, you there?
Yes, now I'm here.
Okay.
Uh, I just wanted to reiterate, uh, something you were saying about that, um, the Federal Care Act money. That's really, I, I'm, I'm gonna treat that as a windfall. That is money that, if it, if it comes in, it's money that, uh, would not be in the next year. It's not part of the budget. It's actually something that would be coming from a separate source. So, um, I'm glad that Dr. Longo knows about that money. I'm a little surprised that it wasn't mentioned when, um, the other people were on the other call. So, uh, that they would know that there were, there could be some offsetting money that comes, but it must be COVID-related, whether it's for extra cleaning supplies or whatever. Uh, and also on the, what you call the 2% fund, uh, Dr. Longo was correct. It's only to be used for capital improvement work. I don't know, I'll have to go back and look at what's in that school budget for the capital improvement type of work. But I would like to think that if you needed to buy ahead with some of your supplies this year for, in planning for next year, you typically do that anyway towards the end of the fiscal year. So I would expect that you would be doing that, looking at everything you could buy this year with any extra monies that you have.
Thanks, Catherine. Uh, so I, we've heard from Carl, we've heard from Judy. Um, uh, it, does anybody else want to speak to the overall budgets and where, where you would like to see them head?
Sure. Can I speak, Chuck?
Yep, this is Jesse, uh, Burnham.
Yes, Jesse Burnham here. Um, there were several comments made in the public hearing wondering, um, how we're related to the town and if we have kids in the school. So I just want to say for the record, I have two kids in the Ashford School and my wife is a teacher at that school. Um, but, um, I was elected for representing the town, not just for the school, even though I am in favor of the school. Um, I just want to point out a couple of things, I did a little research. Um, the Ashford Food Bank, um, normally, um, supplies food to 60 families on a weekly basis. Um, now they've been supplying food to 100 and they are short on food. So if anyone listening can donate food, they could definitely use some extra non-perishable foods. Um, in March, our numbers at the state for unemployment were 89, um, eligible workers in the town of Ashford were unemployed. We're now presently at approximately 748 unemployed. Um, that's not an official number, they won't announce that till May 20th. Um, I spoke at the Board of Ed meeting and I suggested a cut to the assistant principal. Um, the administration and the Board of Ed, um, didn't want to act on that. But I did some further thinking on it and I thought it was worthy just to at least mention. Um, Dr. Longo kind of announced that he'd be looking at retirement after next year. So if he retires, excuse me, as a, uh, a part-time superintendent, how are we gonna be able to afford potentially a full-time superintendent if we're also paying an assistant principal? The assistant principal is not presently filled, it's a vacant position. So by not filling it, we're not affecting any staff. And we could easily drop a $90,000, um, amount on that budget. So I just wanted to mention that. That's all.
Thanks, Jesse. Uh, Angie, do you have any thoughts?
Hi, Angie DeSanto. Piggybacking a little on what Jesse said, um, my opinion is that the school year will not start in the physical building. And I can't even imagine by January, February, March, April of next year, that kids are gonna be going to school. That's my opinion. So therefore, why would we need an administrator to do evaluations and, um, observations of teachers when the teachers aren't gonna be in the classrooms teaching? So that's one. So I agree with Jesse that it's possible for one year at least, that position not be filled. Um, and then the, the remaining administrators do what they administrate. School year is gonna be looking different next year, very, very different. Um, doesn't mean we, that the school, uh, needs less money necessarily. Uh, so then I'm gonna go to my next point, which is going by, um, Dr. Longo's, I think his appoint, his point. The $49,000 and the 156,000, the difference is 107-ish. So I'm wondering if we reinstated somewhere around 100,000 to the school, if that would not eliminate a if that would not eliminate a position, I'm thinking about that. But then the second idea about, around that is, can you really teach a foreign language when you can't have kids talking to each other and to the teacher? In that foreign language, it's all like written down in worksheets? I'm just wondering if one-year lapse of foreign language wouldn't, it couldn't be done anyway, I'm not sure. So that's a suggestion around that. And then the other ideas I was, I had put down was that, yes, I agree with John that many people are going to try to forego paying their taxes, that's an option. And also there's tax relief, if you make a certain amount below, which you can get tax relief. So the revenues coming into our town from the various places are going to decrease. So that's a concern of mine too. So, that's it, thank you.
Thanks Angie, just a comment on yours. I believe that we as a board should consider next year's both town side and Board of Ed's side to be under normal circumstances. I think there's too much speculation about what it's going to be like, you know, three or four months down the road as far as, I think we have to plan that school will be normal and functioning, functionings at the town will be back to normal. I understand very clearly that that may not end up being the case, but I don't think fiscally, we can plan that. I do think that we have to dip our toes into the tea leaves, so to speak, to get a read on what we think we're going to get a hit for revenue. I happen to believe that we are going to get hit as a town on the revenue side of this equation. The budgets we're talking about are basically the expenditure side. That's what people are worried about, is the expenditure side, and that's what people are going to be voting on, is the expenditure side of these budgets. So I guess my point is, is we need to plan that the expenditures will be under normal circumstances. That's, that's my opinion.
Chuck, I have a question, this is Carl Falls.
Carl, go ahead.
If we went along with Angie giving about 100,000 back to the school, that's about two-thirds of what we cut, what would, what would that two-thirds be for the town government side?
I, I think that if, I guess my feeling is, is that if we, if we were to increase the school's budget by 100,000, then we would, I would feel we should also reciprocate on the town side with about 35,000.
All right, thank you. Open this up.
Yeah, I was going to ask Garth if he had a thought that he wanted to express on, on sort of where this discussion is going, what your, what your thoughts are.
Well, you know, I think about all this stuff quite a bit and I can sound heartless at times, I guess, but when I looked at the tax calculator, and for me personally, it's about $10 a month and your mileage may vary. I think if, if somebody is saying we don't need another tax increase and they're concerned about the 10 bucks, well, you know, and they want a zero increase for, for the town and the school, what about next year? And the year after, and the year after, taxes generally go up, the price of everything goes up. It's just kind of the way it is, so if, I think if you're on the edge right now and you have a hard time with the 10 bucks, then you got to figure something out because taxes overall will just go up, right? They do. So I don't know if that generally has any real bearing on this, but when I listen to people's arguments about what we should do, some of it, to me, if you look at the details, I'm not sure if they, for me, if they hold so much water. If $10 is going to make or break you, or even $30 a month is going to make or break you, then, you know, something's going on. I don't, I can't imagine a town deciding a budget based on, you know, considering all of that, it just doesn't work like that, nowhere. Nowhere in the world are taxes kept at 0% year after year. You know, because some people are having a hard time, this doesn't work. I have a lot of notes taken, but I don't think I need to go through all of them. So yeah, I sound heartless, but $10 a month, I'm in, I'm in favor of, of at least the 100,000 over last year's budget for the, for the school. So, that's me.
Thanks Garth. On this board, I also like to hear from our alternates who are very active members on this board, they're often asked to vote. So we keep our alternates very engaged, so Esther, John, and Butch, I'd also like to hear your guys' thoughts on this. One of you may end up having to vote on the 20th, so I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Happy to go if no one else wants to go first.
John, that'd be great.
Regarding Garth's point, I, I am not concerned right now about the monthly increase to the taxpayers, we're past that point. That concern for the affordability of the tax increase was done back in March when we had that budget. This is completely separate, we're not talking about, in my mind, we're not talking about the people that can't afford a 10 or a $30 a month increase, we're talking about the people that have lost their jobs and are going from paying $4,000 a year in property taxes to now paying $0 a year in property taxes. So it's not about the impact on the taxpayer in my mind, right now it's about the impact on the town revenue side. And if those revenues drop, if, I think it was Jesse said that there's a possibility of 700 and some people in town being unemployed, that's, that's approximately a fifth of the town, 20% or so. If that's the case, and we really do lose that much revenue, plus in combination with all the crumbling foundations reductions and all that stuff, and the possible reductions from the state monies coming in, where does that leave us? We have such a small rainy day fund to go to, whatever monies we've promised out in this budget, if you can't cover them, what happens? That's, that is where I am at an absolute crossroads here. And I just want to mention a couple of things regarding, it was brought up at the last meeting tonight, that the rest of the town had an opportunity to speak tonight and didn't, and it's all, you know, people that support increasing money to the schools. Well, the schools sent out plenty of messages of doom and gloom incentivizing the parents to come and speak tonight. So we're hearing a biased opinion, the ad that went out for this meeting tonight didn't spell doom and gloom for any other aspect of the town. So you have to keep in mind that we are hearing a biased sampling tonight. I also reached out to the Board of Education to try to relay some of the concerns I had of the general overall financial picture to give them an idea, because their meetings tend to move towards, let's convince the Board of Finance to put this money back because they're idiots and don't know what they're doing and they're evil people that just cut our budget. And there's a lot more to it. But I was stopped from being able to converse with the Board of Education, I'm not going to get into that right now. But that's there. The other thing is, I probably shouldn't bother saying this now, but I refuse to vote at the vote for this budget, no matter how it goes. I think people should be absolutely up in arms that the right of the people to vote has been taken away with a stroke of a pen from the governor. There, our job isn't to vote for them, our job is to present them with a budget for us to do the legwork and for them to have the final check and balance in the vote. And with a stroke of a pen, the governor has taken that away. They have erased the power of the electorate and given it to an elected body in all the towns in the state. And that is purely frightening to me.
Thanks John. Just, I just want to say this out loud, Jane Urban, I will get to you in one, one moment. I want to hear from Esther and Butch and then I'll, I'm gonna, I will bend a little bit and ask for you to speak. Esther? Mike, is Esther still with us?
Yep, I just unmuted her.
Okay, Esther?
Chuck, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I couldn't quite get who was the last public speaker on your public discussion, but it was the first person that I heard mention some of the chaos that surrounded input to the Board of Finance with regard to late budget and late audit results that kind of didn't give us.
That was the, I'll let you know, that was the former chair, Catherine Silver Smith.
No, it was somebody before Catherine, I know Catherine's voice, it was the last public speaker on your public, public discussion portion. Anyway, my, my point was that a lot of information went out to Mr. Kovak's point with regard to supporting this budget, but not a lot of information had gone out about our many pleas for information with regard to budget input and audit final numbers. And that we went forward voting on a budget without audited numbers, which also is very complicated for members of the board. So I very much appreciate not only the Board of Education's comments and the public's comments, some of which I feel have been put onto the Board of Finance unfairly, such as that we want to cut teachers in Paris, which certainly we do not. And that many suggestions that were made by the public to the Board of Education are now being directed at the Board of Finance. So that becomes a little bit complicated. But on the other hand, I very much appreciate the comments made by Mr. Burnham and Mr. Kovak that dealt with facts. And that that is, we are moving forward into an area of uncertainty, so that's problematic. Some of the members of the public who spoke about the town budget, which I know also is very complicated and that we've asked some questions to our selectmen in the past and also gotten some clarification, and additionally, the complication from Eastford dropping out of support to our fire department. And that that clearly translates into what the response rate is. And we, we talked about that in the past, but I was glad somebody brought it up. I just wasn't sure that the answer was as lengthy as we've had in the past, so that it was very clear. So I think that we really have to look at the budget and if, if we're in the position that the school budget is not sustainable, meaning every year there must be an increase because all their fixed costs are constant and they're all negotiated raises for teachers, then we do have to look at the town budget because we can't just continue to raise taxes. So I heard Carl say we need to restore both to bring it, which would bring it up above a mill. But I also agree that we have to, we have to look, if, if we're increasing the school budget beyond what it was last year, then we need to look at the town budget because Region 19 has already given us that .75 increase. And then the only thing I wanted to say about the cup of coffee analogies is, not everybody has that average amount. So for some people, their taxes are increasing significantly just, just to live in the town of Ashford. And some people live in the town of Ashford for the school and other people have lived in the town of Ashford for generations. And so they're hurting, and that's all I have to say.
Thanks Esther, I'd like to hear from Butch and then I want to hear from Jane and Catherine. Butch, do you have a thought?
Yes, I, I've been looking at the newspaper and I see headline, $900 million short in this fiscal year at the state of Connecticut level, which is a lot of money, okay? The only reason I'm bringing that up is when the state don't have enough money to make their payments, they steal from us. Instead of sending us $2, they send us a dollar and a half, okay? I'm just using that as an instance, okay? Also, next year, they're predicting 3.2 billion, that's what it'd be, taxes that won't be collected from the usual way. That is one heck of a lot of money. Where else can they get it but from the towns by not paying them what they said they would in February or March or whenever they send that to us? The other thing that ties into this, I believe our fund balance, that we could actually take money out of that is around $90,000, okay? So that going to give us a lot of leeway to cover anything that the state might take away from us. This is, all I'm, why I'm bringing this up, it's happened in the past, okay? And I don't know how the Connecticut is going to get out of what the predicament they're in because this isn't going away tomorrow, okay? This problem is going to be here for a while. Some people are predicting even next year in the schools, which I have no idea. Some of them people that talk on tele, on the television, I think they know what they're talking about and others, I think they're out in left field, okay? But I know we have to watch out for what we don't have no way of knowing what's going to happen. And years before, in the past, we have lost some money, not a great, great amount where we had to make it up. But we don't have anywhere to make it up, $90,000 is not a lot of money to have on hand to cover. There are other funds in that fund, but that is what we tell creditors and bond people, we have to operate in case we do have a problem with the tax collection where we don't have any money coming in. I don't favor raising anybody's tax, amount of money to be given from taxation. I think it could stay at the zero, because somebody's going to have to bite the bullet for this. And I'd hate to see the town not have enough money to operate on the expenses that we say we gave them money for. And with that, I'll be quiet. Butch Simpson.
Thanks Butch. I'm going to ask everyone to indulge me a little bit. I am going to, I think when there's certain members who are relevant to the conversation, I may ask them to speak. So I've had a request, I've had a request from Jane Urban to make a quick comment, Jane?
Point of order? Well, I don't know if we run by Robert's Rules of Order or not, I'm just voicing my objection to what we've had the public hearing. This is a special meeting, there are rules for this stuff, I'm just voicing my opinion on it, that's all.
Thank you John, in essence, I agree with you. So Jane?
Okay, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to make a couple of quick points. I think we've mentioned a few times that the Board of Finance doesn't get to tell the Board of Ed how they spend their money and yet several members, I feel, are making suggestions about staffing changes and things that seem a little uncomfortable to me. So, I just wanted to mention that when the Board of Ed makes decisions about staffing, we rely on the teachers and administration who are the experts to make their recommendations for us. And I would hope that the Board of Finance would trust the Board of Ed to listen to those people who know more and are in the school every day to make those recommendations. We always have the positions we need and the positions we would like. And it's been a challenge to ever get those positions we would like. So, the positions we have are the ones we need. I'd like to mention if we are talking about specific positions, that one that is up for possible elimination depending on the outcome of this vote is our elementary Spanish teacher who happens to be our only minority faculty member and a native speaker, which is an incredible opportunity for our children. It's heartbreaking to me that that is potentially on the table. John Kopeck said some pretty, I think, inappropriate things about how the Board of Ed addressed this cut. I don't ever recall hearing a Board of Ed member saying that the Board of Finance was evil or not thinking or not considering. And the Board of Ed takes very seriously what this crisis means to our community. Our school is feeding students, they are helping families, they are providing emotional and support beyond just intellectual support. And I think that it's very unfair. These boards try to treat each other respectfully and I just wanted to register that that complaint or that comment by John seemed a bit out of line to me and that is not how the Board of Ed feels about this decision. We know it's a hard one for the Board of Finance and we appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. Catherine?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, I didn't hear anybody make a comment saying that the Board of Finance was evil.
Was in leathers.
It was what? In letters?
It was in summer leathers, yes.
Okay, but certainly nobody that I heard during either of these meetings. I did want to thank- I'm sorry?
Also said foolish.
Oh, and foolish? That's a shame. I did want to thank-
Hold on, Catherine. I, I want to move away from sort of name-calling and all that stuff. I'm gonna, I'm gonna reiterate. I felt that, I read every single letter that was sent, all, all 59 of them. And I read all of them at least twice. Yes, there were a few that were on the edge, but what I would say is that the lion's share, the by far, everyone was relatively respectful. Most people were very respectful. I appreciated all the letters. I agree with the comment that a few were maybe a little bit off. But it, it is no reason for this board to react and it's, uh, so I just wanted to make that comment. Catherine, go ahead.
I wanted to commend Mr. Burnham for bringing some of the facts about the unemployed in our town and how that's risen. I think that's a key factor for many, certainly for those folks. The other thing is, I believe Mr. Kovacs said that you did not want to vote because you didn't love the responsibility, you didn't, the responsibility of the voting because that's not how this is supposed to work, basically. Or that the governor has made it so that you have to do that. I look at this as, this is the hand you've been dealt. You have an accountability to the town. You have an accountability as an elected official to make good decisions on behalf of the town and that you don't abdicate that responsibility. So, that's my personal comment about not voting, anybody not voting that sits on a board. And the other thing I want people to remember as well, and I don't know if Butch had thought to mention it, but, and Carl certainly knows, that benefits for the elderly have been cut over the last few years. There are a number of things that they no longer get as benefits. And I think one of them was not having the benefit of a voucher for food from the farmer's market, for example. So, we need to take into account that it's not just about the taxes that they would pay. It's also about the other things that they need and that they don't have as much of that coming in. The fact that we, again, Mr. Burnham saying about the food bank and the increase in the number of people that are having to go and get food from the food bank. I believe that Esther has told me in the past that there's quite a line now, cars lined up to get food from that food bank in a way that we've never seen before. And we can't ignore that. So, again, I know you have a very difficult decision to make. I know the Board of Ed has a difficult decisions that they have to make in terms of where monies should be applied. I think when, uh, when Mrs. Urban was talking about the, uh, the Board of Finance doesn't determine where changes are made in the school budget. One of the things you have to remember is that when the school comes in to make a budget proposal, they have to make their case. They're like every other department in this town. They have to make their case for it. And in some situations, they've not been able to do that. So, again, I know you're gonna make the right decision that you can for our town. And that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine. I also want to jump on a, a little bit of Jesse. I, I want us to be careful. I don't disagree with Jesse, uh, but I am, I am, I want us to be cautious with those numbers. I don't doubt the 60 to 100 for the, for the food bank. That's a number that I think we can determine. I don't know the source of the 750 and I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just saying, I, I don't want that number to drive our decision because we, I, I don't know where that number comes from and I can't verify it. And I'm not, I'm not saying Jesse's wrong. I just, we, we've been, we've, we've been down this road before where a, a, a number has been stated and suddenly it's orders of magnitude off. So, again, I'm asking my board to be careful with numbers when we, we don't have a document in front of us or exactly where it came from or it's a moving target. So, anyway, I just wanted to say that.
Chuck, just, uh, this is Jesse Burnham, just to make sure, um, it's for the record, it is off of the state website.
Okay.
On the Department of Labor, um, Connecticut Department of Labor website. I can forward the link so it can be attached to the minutes if necessary.
Okay, that's great, Jesse. Thank you for the clarification. So, you know, here we are, we've got to decide what we want to do.
Can I, Butch Simpson, can I inject something again?
Sure. Go ahead.
Hello?
Go ahead, Butch.
Go ahead.
I've been, I've been watching Channel 61 in the morning and every morning they show Rinseless Field with the cars stacked up. They claim they're seeding about a thousand cars a day and they're taking a, they take a poll of the cars that come in and ask them if you've ever been to Food Share before. 75% of them, it was 70, now it's 75% of the people that are coming. I have never been to Food Share before. In my life, I've been to Food Share many, many times, okay? It shows, but that's only Hartford County and Talon County and this don't show nothing about, but it shows how many people in this state are not getting the proper amount of food to eat. And that is the people that we hurt if we raised the taxes too much, okay? I, I hear what everybody's saying. I didn't read everything in the letters, all the letters you gave me, but I scanned them because I just didn't have the time to read every one of them. I applaud you for having the time to read every one twice. I scanned them and I could see this tremendous amount of support for the school budget. But again, that's a small minority of the people that are here. I wish that we could vote on it. I agree with the gentleman that says he don't want to vote because it's gonna be up to six people to decide what happens here in Ashford. And is that the right way to handle a free society? I don't think so, but I don't know anything better, okay? I'll sit by and keep listening, okay? Thank you, Butch Simpson.
Thanks, Butch. So, uh, you know, the first motion we're gonna have is what to do with the general government budget, which I think is also gonna be tied to what we're gonna do with the Ashford school budget. Am I, am I getting the sense that the general tenor of the seated members is that we are inclined to increase the school's budget by a certain number and then increase the town's budget by a third of that number? An example, if we increase the school by 90,000, we increase the town by 30.
Yeah.
If that's something that we're thinking about doing, one of the things that I'd like to do is if Cheryl could indulge me with, as the budget stands for the public hearing, we have an increase of .974 mils. If we were to increase these budgets a total of, of $120,000, what would the mil rate increase in total be?
1.375.
Chuck, can I just say something?
Yeah, I have something to say too.
Yes, who said, who wants, who was it that wanted to go first?
Let Cheryl finish.
Garth.
Does that, Garth? Hold on, Garth. Cheryl, were you done?
Yeah, it would increase 1.375 mil.
Okay, thank you. Carl, did you get that?
Yep, thank you.
All right, Garth, go ahead.
Um, it's, it's just a thought and more of a hypothetical question, but when, I also watch the news a lot and when we hear about people waiting in line for food, what do we do with that information when it comes to the, the budget? Does that mean that we should think, well, people are hurting, so we should, we should cut the budget? And how will that affect people in Ashford waiting for food? You know what I mean? I mean, how does that play? I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff going on in the world right now, so. But the subject at hand is, is the budget for the school. And how does that all play? So, it's more of a rhetorical question, right? I don't expect you to have an answer, but I'm just thinking to myself, okay, yeah, there's people in, in line. So, how does that affect my decision? I mean, if we had a zero, if, if we, if the school got zero, it was the same budget as last year, right? So, no increase. Is, is that gonna make the line shorter at the food bank? I don't know, just thinking.
I, I agree with that perspective, actually. No, it's not going to, but it might give some other people a few more resources to help, to help those people. You know, I, I myself have donated resources to help people who I know are in trouble in this town. And it's because at the moment, I'm able to do that. And my hope is, is that others that are fortunate, and I feel very fortunate, are, are able to do that as well. And if we, so I think, I think that's the relevance. I would, I would argue that the most relevant number I've heard tonight is from Jesse, if that number is accurate, the seven, if the 700 and whatever unemployed. That to me, that's a, that's a big, that's a big deal.
Yeah, and, and so, not say Ashford, right? Do you say that in a way in Ashford?
Correct.
Okay. But still, the question in my mind, and what I said, not expecting an answer, it's just thinking, how does that change things? I think maybe what it is really, you, you walk a line between being sympathetic to people in Ashford that have kids in school and being sympathetic to people who don't and are paying taxes and having a hard time.
Garth, are you set?
Yeah.
Thank you. Angie?
Yeah, my, okay, I'm unmuted. When you propose that you got- I'm sorry. Say it again?
I, I was just telling the, everybody available that this is Angie DeSanto.
Oh, yes. Chuck, when you were mentioning that, um, let me get my thoughts. The consensus seemed to feel that if the education, education budget, we compensate, you know, we give back some of the money that we cut, whatever, that you have to do for the town. I don't feel the same way. Because I think there were services in the town and I disagree with you in that you can't project what's gonna happen. We're not gonna have a senior center. We're not gonna have a rec center. We're not gonna have any of those things or any of those costs. Knowlton Hall should be costing us almost nothing. There's no library, so it shouldn't be $70,000 a year or whatever it is that costs the electric bill for Knowlton Hall, whatever it is, it's a huge amount. I don't know. I'm, I'm throwing these numbers out and I don't really know what I'm talking about. But the point is, I think there are budget items for the town that are not gonna be needed in the foreseeable future. We are not gonna be normal for a year, two year and a half until we have testing and a immunization. So, the reality is, people won't get together in, in groups. So, you can't have anything going on at Knowlton Hall. You can't have anything going on physically in the school. You can't have a senior center run. It's just the reality. And so, I disagree, I don't think the town, uh, because this mil rate with what we have to do and the other one, I come up, I don't know Cheryl if this is true, but 2.349 with everything?
The increase?
Yeah, if we gave the school whatever it was, a third, and then we had a third for the town and then E.O. Smith and all that, .974. Whatever, I added it up to 2.349 something.
So, Angie, let me just make sure it's clear. The budget as it stands right now, the one that we presented at the public hearing, the mil rate increase is .974. That's with no dollar, increased dollars to the, and it, and it's no increase to the town. If we were to give the school 90 and the town 30, then the mil rate would, would be up 1.375 in total.
That's a total, including the .974?
Correct.
Oh, I misunderstood, I thought it was additional. Okay.
So, just, again, just, just so that we're all clear, every $30,000 we're talking about is a tenth of a mil.
That's right, okay.
90 is three and 30 is one, so that's four tenths of a mil that we would add to the .97. And that's, that's for everybody listening. I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that the math stays relatively simple.
Yep.
Excuse me, this is Valerie, could I ask a question?
Certainly, Valerie.
Well, you were talking initially about $100,000 for the Board of Education and then 30,000 for the town. And now I hear you saying 90,000 Board of Education and 30,000 the town. Which, which are the figures that you're, you're actually gonna vote on?
We haven't made a motion yet.
Yeah, so Valerie, we haven't made a motion. And so, what we're doing is we're just sort of bantering around orders of magnitude. And knowing that, knowing that a tenth of a mil is 30,000, 90 and 30 is really easy to deal with. So, we're, I, you know, so again, when, when it was sort of talking about 100- So where, I, you know, so again, when, when it was sort of talking about a hundred to, you know, thirty-five, uh, to the town, that was just, it, it's an opening salvo, it's a discussion maker.
Okay, not a problem.
And that's, uh, Valerie Oliver, who is our recording secretary for anybody that's listening.
So, uh, can I just, um, finish up with the question, Chuck? Angie DeSanto? So, uh, can Ralph speak to, will there be savings if we can't run the senior center, we can't run Knowlton Hall, we can't run the library, that, it's not, you know, for the foreseeable future, uh, because they're group kind of things? Um, would there be savings there?
Yeah, it's a good question. Um, Ralph, are you able to speak at all to, to that?
Oh, he's muted.
He's muted.
Take your, uh, you need to, uh, there you go.
Uh, we have nothing to do with the library, that's a separate budget, similar to the fire department, we just provide them with space.
Correct.
We have nothing to do.
Which is costly.
And, and the, uh, as far as the senior center goes, the, the only part of that, uh, in our budget is actually the operation of the center, its heat, lights, and, and that type of situation. Uh, you know, the, the actual senior center activity group is the one that puts out the programs. We don't.
Can I speak to that? But there are budgetary amounts.
What's that?
There are budgetary amounts for all of those, uh, you know, physi- physical costs to run a, a physical building.
That's what the, yeah, that's what the town, we are actually still running that building, we have a, we have a person in there three days a week, uh, she's the, uh, senior, uh, she, agent for the elderly, and, uh, we still pay for heat and lights of that, it's going to be less, but it's not going to be the same.
Okay, okay, yep.
And also Angie, I'm sorry if I may, the, the program expense, she won't be spending the program expense, but we also won't be getting the revenue on the other side.
Sure, yep, okay.
That was Cheryl Baker, our town treasurer speaking.
All right, Chuck.
Chuck, this is Carl.
Uh, one second, Esther, uh, Carl, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to make a comment about that town budget. The, the Board of Ed people talked about increases, I perused the budget that came out in this hearing, and there are several people that took pay cuts at, at Town Hall, that are Ashford residents, that I saw, a considerable amount of pay cuts, plus a couple of part-time people that helped with tax collection and that kind of stuff that are cut. So I think it's just as important to run that end of the town as it is to run the school end of the town, and, and if we're going to give one to one, we got to give one to the other. That's all.
Thanks, Carl. Esther?
Um, I didn't hear Angie's portion of the question about, were there any savings around the recreational department, maybe with canceled concerts or some of the programs they run at the schools, that now there might be deep cleaning involved following these programs? So, so are there any savings there that could be applied from the town budget to the school budget? So that's just a question, I didn't hear, I, I thought I heard Angie ask it, but I didn't hear the answer.
Uh, so, uh, Esther, a good question, and what I'd like to do is ask Ralph if, a, a more broad question, given the circumstances that we're in, I think what we're sort of dancing around is, is there overall savings to the town budget due to the COVID situation that we're in? Um, and I, I guess what I'm getting at is, is in your best estimation, and maybe Cheryl might have an answer to this as well, um, are you seeing an overall savings, or are we holding steady, or are there expenses involved that we're worried about getting compensated for?
But, well, I, from, from my side of it, Chuck, you know, there is, I don't believe there are a lot of savings, there may be some, uh, you know, Knowlton Hall is, is pretty much not in use right now, so there would be savings in, in a little bit in heat and lights, uh, but if that type of situation we're looking, uh, there's also been a, a significant amount of refunds that, you know, that come into recreation, uh, and they have to go back, because we're not, we're not able to do those programs.
So, yeah, so what you're saying is we're taking a hit on the revenue side of some of what we planned on?
Right, exactly.
There would be savings in the concerts, free programs, the free program that Recreation runs, there would be some savings there next year.
So Chuck, is that why you're saying if you do the school, the ninety grand, that the town should get thirty? Because I was trying to figure out why we're talking about if we add to the school, automatically we add it to the town.
I think it's, I think it's a sense of equity. Why are we asking the town to take the hit, and the town's the side that's going to take the hit when we get underfunded if that happens from the school?
Okay, yeah.
When, when we don't get the dollars, and, you know, again, do I have a crystal ball? No, nobody here has a crystal ball, but when I read the paper and they're telling us these massive, uh, lack of resources that they were, that they were counting on from the state side, and that they're going to have to cut expenditures, I, that, that rolls downhill, that's, that's municipal. Now, I can't tell you that that's going to happen, but it sure seems likely to me, and when we pass a, when we pass a board budget, we are on the hook for that expenditure no matter what.
Oh.
And so I think giving the town, uh, you know, they were requesting like seventy something thousand, uh, before, uh, the firehouse thing, we asked them to take a hit of twenty, which they did, and then we asked them to cut it completely. And again, I've, I've talked to other departments, and again, each department, it's not like the school, you know, they can sort of move the money around wherever they want to, we can't do, we have to authorize a payment, a change in the, the department budget. So if the treasurer's office goes twenty bucks over, they have to come and request it from the Board of Finance, and we've got to take it from somewhere. Sometimes the Board of Selectmen will come to us and say, hey, we've got a little bit of excess in, uh, you know, roads, which never happens, but let's say roads, um, we, we will then have, maybe we can cover the little bit that went over in, uh, the town clerk's office. So my point is, I've talked to a lot of these people, and, and, and Ralph doing his due diligence as our selectman, asked them all to come in with tight budgets, which they did, and that was when we were increasing at seventy-six thousand. Then we had them cut twenty, so they squeezed to do the twenty, and then we asked them to take the additional fifty out, and trust me, they did it, and you don't hear them complaining, but they are complaining, it's, it's going to be really tight.
That's what I'm saying, they're not complaining, but the school, you know, uh, you did a good, you did good explaining all that.
So that's why I feel that if, if, if we're throwing mil rate to the wind, then we need to make the town a little more whole, that's, I guess, what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I, I get that.
Can I say something, Chuck?
Uh, go ahead, Ralph.
I, I, I think one of the things most people don't understand, uh, and I'm going to use ECS, Education Cost Sharing, uh, you know, let's say we're getting three million dollars for that from, from the state, and we budget for the school. Well, if they cut fifty thousand dollars or five hundred thousand dollars off ECS, the town has to eat that, because the school already has, has the expenditures approved by the Board of Finance. You understand that?
Yep.
So it, it's, what's that?
Oh, this is Valerie, could you just say that again, that if they budget, we're supposed to get nine million, and they cut five hundred thousand, then?
ECS comes directly to the town. And, and, and what it does, if they take a hundred thousand dollars off of ECS, we're short that kind of money on revenue side. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yes, yes, okay.
Okay, but the, the school is still allowed to spend the budget that was allocated.
I, I'm going to say it one more time, uh, and I think Ralph did a, a, a good job. Um, uh, so when we're looking at this budget, and we, we decide on the expenditure side what we're going to do for the school, what we don't know, and we've never known, is how stable is the revenue side that we're counting on? We have revenue built into our, our budget coming from the state, and as, uh, one person sent to us is a reminder, uh, that the largest state grant received by the, the town is the, uh, Education Cost Sharing Grant. In the past six years, the ECS grant to the town of Ashford has decreased three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, and the, uh, Education Regular Transportation Grant, also from the state, has decreased roughly thirty-eight thousand. So those, those are reductions that are built into now into our mil rate. So when everybody is, uh, concerned about how high the mil rate is, part of that is because monies promised us by the state have been reduced over a period of time. So these, we pass a, a responsible expenditure side to this, yet we have an unstable revenue side that we are ultimately responsible for. That's, that's the concern, that's part of what we have to grapple with when we, um, make these decisions.
Chuck, Bud Simpson?
Go ahead, Bud.
I agree with you a hundred percent. There are, we just don't know what's going to happen with that, okay? I think that that state will decrease the amount of money they promised the, uh, town of Ashford this beginning of the year when they tried to make up their budget. And we know they're short of money, and the easiest thing is to do it from us. The only other thing I'm going to say is, if somebody really needs something, up to nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, we as the Board of Finance can direct that money to be paid to them, okay, to spend. If it's over that, we can vote, send it to a town meeting, and the town would vote on it if we can, okay? Because I don't know what, how long this system is going to end up staying with us, but then you could, let's say fifty thousand dollars for emergency, because one of the, one of the pieces of equipment in the town garage got stolen or gotten in action, or something, and it was destroyed, and we need to have another one, okay? And the insurance company didn't cover the whole bill, I'm just using that as an instance. So there are places we can do the money, but it's kind of, the twenty thousand dollars today is not a lot of money, and anything over that, you'd have to go back to the town, which is the way it should be, but again, would the town support it? If it don't, then we're in big trouble, okay? And with our surplus fund being depleted as much as it has, because we're not getting, we used to go about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with, uh, the collection on taxes, more than what we needed to go, because we always figured that, I believe, around seventy or seventy-eight percent, and if you, if you collect a hundred percent, you got two percent, uh, one percent of, uh, the taxes that you collected, okay? It's money that goes surplus, and that's happened, we did that for years, that's why we were able to build the funds we have for capital non-recurring and, uh, the surplus fund. So right now, it looks like we're in real deep, deep trouble, no matter what we do by our finances, because we're asked to make judgments on things that we don't know will really happen. The revenue might not come in as much as it is, we probably will not collect ninety-seven percent of taxes. I, I don't know if the tax collector is on the line and could comment on that, but I, Bud Simpson, don't think that we will collect ninety-seven percent of, uh, our tax revenue that's due for the following year. Okay, I'll be quiet, Bud Simpson.
Thanks, Bud.
You're welcome.
Well, what do we want to do? I think we need, somebody needs to make a motion about what we're going to do for general government budget and the, uh, school. The other motions will be easy, they're the capital and they're the Region Nineteen, those will be simple. So these are the two that are on the table we got to think about.
Chuck, another consideration, um, you might want to think about is that statutorily, we're not supposed to increase our expenditures more than two point five percent, and, uh, that would be, uh, rather than the one twenty, seventy thousand would be keeping us within two point five percent, because Region Nineteen's increase is so high.
Cheryl, could you repeat that number?
Uh, seven, seventy thousand would keep us within the two point five percent increase in expenditures.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And you mean, you mean within the overall, uh, education package, both Ashford School and, right?
The whole budget?
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question?
Go ahead, Bud.
Bud Simpson, what happens if we go over to two point five or whatever Cheryl said? What happens then? Do we get fined? Do we get in trouble, or somebody just says, hey, you guys spent more money than you were supposed to?
Yeah, they send the, uh, two point five percent police to your house. I, I actually don't know what would happen.
Well, I would imagine something would happen, you'd be fined or something, okay? Maybe state dollars taken away.
It might, it may.
That, that, that thing was passed a long time ago, and, and a long time shortly after it was passed, we got a legal opinion that it, it wouldn't stand up.
Uh, this is Catherine, that's my understanding as well.
Catherine, can you reiterate that, please?
Yes, that's my understanding as well, is that it would not stand up. I mean, I was also, um, looking at that all the time, I was on the board. Um, so that's, that's one part of that. The, uh, the other thing I did want to mention is, if, if, um, the Board of Ed goes over their budget in spending, each member of the Board of Ed is personally financially liable for the overage. It's the only board there is where that happens. So it's a matter of everybody needs to manage their budget tightly, I can see Tess right now, I can see your face, um, just in case you didn't, weren't aware, John, I think you're aware, right? Okay, so with that two point five percent, that was gone a long time ago, a long time ago.
They still have, we fill out the form every year, so I thought I'd mention it.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Cheryl.
Thanks, Cheryl. Um, so I need somebody to make a motion. Uh, and what we're, what we're going to be discussing is a, a motion to approve an appropriation of some dollars, and we can come up with the dollars, for the general government budget. Basically, I need to know if, if the board is thinking we should increase or keep them where we're at. And I need a motion.
I'm moving increase the general government budget thirty, thirty, uh, thousand dollars.
Tell second that, Carl.
Yes, see?
This is Garth, sorry.
Oh.
Yep. So I think with that uh, particular motion, basically what we're, what that motion is, is implying is that we would add thirty thousand dollars to general government budget, which right now stands at um, three million four hundred and six uh, thousand five hundred and eighty-two. Uh, and if we do that, it's implying that we're going to add dollars to the Board of Ed's budget. Are are we in agreement on that?
Correct, I am.
I am.
Angie, I have a question.
Angie, go ahead.
Yeah, so um, should our motion include both increases or?
I'm gonna have separate motions because we're gonna vote on them separately.
Oh, I see. You're right. Um, well, I'm not willing to vote for it unless I know what the education budget is gonna be increased by.
Okay, and that's why I'm thinking that I think they're kind of tied together. Uh, I agree with that. So um, it, are you guys more comfortable with me starting with the Board of Ed's budget?
I don't think it's necessary. There's a motion on this floor. Either a vote is up or down.
I think Kyle is right on that. And once you make a motion, you've gotta, you've gotta go through with it. If you don't want it, vote it down.
Is there any more discussion? All in all in favor of um, raising the uh, general government budget by thirty-eight thousand dollars? Uh, and I'm gonna do this by roll call. Um, I I think these are important votes, and I want to be clear on who's who's voting what. Um, and so I'm gonna start with Garth Bean. Um, you made yours, you seconded the motion. So your vote?
Correct.
That's a yes?
Yes.
Uh, Jesse Burnham.
Jesse Burnham, yes.
Uh, Angie DeSanto.
Abstain.
Carl Fallscraft.
Yes.
Judy Austin.
Yes.
Uh, I will also vote yes. Motion passes. That's uh, five uh, five, four, one abstention. Uh, the second uh, item is uh, a motion to prove an appropriation of X dollars for the Ashford Board of Education's budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one to be adopted at the Board of Finance Special Meeting on May twentieth, twenty twenty, to be held virtually. I need a, I need a motion and a second.
This is Garth. I'll make a motion that we um, increase their budget by the ninety thousand like we discussed.
Second, Angie DeSanto.
So that would be
Seven million, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight ninety-three.
Could you do that again, Cheryl?
Seven million, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight ninety-three.
There with me. Thank you. So the motion on the uh, on the uh, floor is uh, Garth Bean moved, Angie DeSanto seconded a motion to approve an appropriation of seven million, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars uh, for the Ashford Board of Education budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one to be adopted at the Board of Finance Special Meeting, May twenty, twenty twenty, uh, to be held virtually. Uh, any other discussion? Uh, Garth, Garth Bean, you got your vote?
Yes.
Uh, Jesse Burnham.
Jesse Burnham, yes.
Angie DeSanto. Angie, are you there?
Sorry, I forgot to unmute. It's a yes.
Thank you. Carl Fallscraft.
Yes.
Judy Austin.
Yes.
Uh, Charles Funk, yes. Uh, motion passes. I need a motion by someone and a second uh, to approve and confirm an appropriation of twenty-two million uh, three thousand seven hundred and ninety, of which three million nine hundred and one thousand five thirty-two is Ashford Ashford's share for operation and maintenance of the Region District Nineteen uh, public school system for July first, twenty twenty to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one fiscal year at the Board of Finance Special Meeting, May twentieth, twenty twenty, to be held virtually. Uh, this is to approve. That's Carl. Uh, and again, this is, this is to approve and confirm. This has already been voted on and passed, but we are just confirming it. I need a second.
Jesse Burnham, second.
Uh, any discussion? Garth Bean.
Um, yes.
Thank you. Jesse Burnham.
Jesse Burnham, yes.
Angie DeSanto.
Yes.
Carl Fallscraft.
Yes.
Judy Austin.
Yes.
Uh, Charles Funk, yes. Uh, the last motion uh, is a motion to approve the appropriation of five hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty for the capital improvement budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one uh, to be adopted at the Board of Finance Special Meeting, May twentieth, twenty twenty, held virtually.
Still moved by Angie DeSanto.
Do I have a second?
Second, Carl Fallscraft.
Uh, any discussion? Uh, Garth Bean.
Yes.
Jesse Burnham.
Jesse Burnham, yes.
Angie DeSanto.
Yes.
Carl Fallscraft.
Yes.
Judy Austin.
Yeah.
Uh, Judy, I, did I hear you correctly? Could you say that again, please?
Yeah.
Okay, thank, because I heard you wrong. So I thought you said no.
Oh, no. Well, the my iPad was far away from me.
Okay, thank you. Charles Funk, yes. Uh, motion passes. All right, um, thank you. Agenda items for the next meeting. Um, uh, I I don't have any right at the moment. Um, remarks for the good of the board. Um, I would like to thank my board members. This, I understand difficulty, trust me, of the choices that you've made tonight. Um, and the responsibility that you are all feeling. Um, uh, I I am truly pleased and honored to be working with all of you. Uh, and you're, I think, very careful and hard deliberations. And I also thank you for your patience with all of my emailing. I I I think I drove myself crazy. I emailed you guys so much stuff. Um, and I did not hear one peep of anyone uh, complaining. Uh, so you guys were taking on an awful lot of information and trying to absorb as best you could um, uh, everything that was coming at you. And I just, I'm really, really proud of all of you, and I I thank you, and I I am very much looking forward to working uh, with you uh, moving forward.
Thanks, Chuck.
Chuck, we're very proud of you too. Glad you could hold up in all this. Um, quite frankly, I read every single email and um, at some point, I was very discouraged, but um, you held up. Thank you.
All right. Uh, thanks. Hey, Carl, it's your favorite, it's your favorite time.
Wait, wait, wait.
Hold on, hold on.
Uh, this is Catherine. This is Catherine. I also want to thank Chuck and the board. I know that this was very difficult, uh, very stressful. And I think you made some very good decisions, so thank you.
Thanks, Catherine.
Thanks, Catherine.
What is the final mill rate impact?
Chuck, Ralph's here.
Go ahead, Ralph.
I I I I would like to say the same thing pretty much that Catherine did. Uh, I I think the Board of Finance tremendous job this year, and it's a tremendous responsibility. Uh, so I I really feel good about about the Board of Finance. Uh, you you've done a great job.
Thanks, Ralph. And Cheryl, can you, Cheryl, can you clarify um, uh, the mill rate that we just voted on for John? Uh, I believe it's one point three seven five increase over last year, correct?
That's correct.
And the total new mill rate is what number?
Three six point eight three six.
All right, John, did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Okay, thank.
Chuck, I have one more thing.
Yes.
There's been, there has been chat going on in the chat session. And I think what people don't realize is that you're conducting this meeting in general, according to Robert's Rules of Order, as best you can with the technology that you're using. And that if people were actually in the room, they would not be holding a chat session with each other while your meeting was going on. And that it is impossible for a chair or anybody else to be monitoring the chat session while you're while you're conducting a meeting. So um, someone has indicated that Zoom allows you to record and save the entire chat. However, that is not part of the meeting. That what is recorded for a meeting is what is part of the actual meeting, the discussion that the board members are having, that kind of thing. So I just want to make it clear to those folks that chat is really inappropriate to be using during this meeting. That's just the same as if they were sitting in the back of the room in a little session, having a little session back there while you were conducting the meeting.
Yep, thank you. And and one of the other, one other thing, uh, I just want to mention is one of the things that I am very, very pleased that the Board of Finance has uh, decided to utilize is an independent facilitator for these meetings. Uh, the fact that we are using go-to meeting and we have an independent person who is not uh, politically affiliated or anything with this town to monitor and uh, be able to facilitate this meeting is of, I think, huge value. Um, and so I am very, I continue to be pleased. Now, I have had people that have reached out to me offering a free service. Um, and I appreciate the thought and the thinking behind that. But I continue to believe that the way we are conducting these um, is absolutely the way that the town should conduct these. Um, and I know that it's costing us a little bit, uh, but I I just think this is the right way to do it. Um, and so, uh, Carl, you you're up.
Wait, wait a minute.
Oh, come on. I'm I'm off. Goodbye.
All right, see you, Carl. All right. Who who was, who else wanted a thought?
I I want to ask a question.
Go ahead, Valerie.
I want to make sure that uh, what Cheryl said about the total mill rate is three six point eight three six.
Uh, that's correct. So it's thirty-six point eight three six.
Thank you.
I move to adjourn.
Oh, still is thunder.
Uh, I need a second.
Second.
Is that Carl?
Yep.
All right, thanks. All in favor?
Aye. Aye, aye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you all for for participating.